Unified Development Bylaws. Planning Commission has been working on some changes to the bylaws. And we have some folks here from the Planning Commission. Hugh Quinn is here, Kathy Hasbrook. I believe Tim Roper is online with us.
John Cummings?
Preston Bistro is here. Oh, and John Cummings is also here. The principal purpose of the proposed Development Bylaws Amendment is to encourage workface housing in the village districts, clarify uses that are exempt from zoning, define primitive camps and short-term rentals, and require new roads to conform to Chester's Roads and Bridge standards. And it goes on and it starts talking about streamlining the process and floodplain and a few other things. And I'm not going to get into it, but Hugh's here to go over the whole thing to try to explain it to us and show us what's different than what was and what was changed and the reasons behind it. So Hugh, it's all yours. And I guess we can go through it either in general or however you think might work on this.
Okay, well, thank you, Arnie. I think probably what I'll do is I'll spend a minute or two setting some context. And then I'll hit each one of the items on the summary page and just give a little bit of an explanation if it's not clear what they are. And then I think as we go, if folks have questions, then we can just dive into those. So to get started, what I will say is I'm going to be hitting the highlights, but really, Preston, our town planner and zoning minister, did all the heavy, most of the heavy lifting in terms of authoring this because this particular section of the bylaw is the type of information that, you know, he has a lot of expertise on. But so, what I will say is in addition to that, we had Jason, the Executive Director of Regional Planning, as part of the team to kind of provide some insight into these updates. And then, of course, the entire Planning Commission, most of whom are here today, basically reviewed, vetted, provided input to everything that you're going to be hearing about tonight. So we have a pretty good process. What I will say for this particular update, once the Planning Commission was done with our work, we reviewed it and got feedback from the DRB. So they've been able to see this and provide feedback, which, you know, we incorporated. Obviously, we've had one public hearing, and this is the second. So that's a little bit of, you know, background about, you know, how we go about, you know, doing this work. And what I will say, we tend to have some guiding principles that we use as we're doing this work generally. First and foremost, making sure that we have good alignment to the town plan. Secondly, we're trying to streamline, make the process of permitting easier and more friendly. We're trying to keep things simple and clear. And of course, we're trying to make adjustments that we feel will help create better and more opportunities for housing. So those are some of the guiding principles that we use when we look at any of the bylaw updates we're making. And in addition to that, as you may know, late last year, we did a community survey. So we take the input that we got from the community at large about things that they thought about planning and make sure that we're cross-checking information that came back in the survey as it relates to the work we're doing. So now this particular, and lastly, on the, you know, on the big picture stuff, this is one of a number of updates that we're in the progress of working through. So we've chosen to, you know, break this large effort of getting the bylaws updated down into sections. This section is largely around general standards and definitions, development review process. So while, you know, some people might not like the term boilerplate, a lot of this is boilerplate, but it's very important boilerplate and it applies to all zoning districts. So it's really foundational inasmuch as we want to make sure that if there's adjustments that need to be made at this level, we take care of those and get those adopted. And what you'll see coming up is, so we're starting with the foundation and then we'll be moving with other work incrementally around the different parts of town, starting in the middle of town and then working our way out. So I just wanted to sort of remind everybody of the high-level, you know, strategy and the process we're taking to get this body of work done. So if there's no questions yet, I'll start just hitting the summary list. And as I said, if you ask really hard questions, I'm going to go, Preston. Prepare for that. Okay, so the first line item is basically, and what you, and one of the things you'll see if you look to scan the list, you're going to see, you know, some kind of themes. Some of it's just clarification. Something seems confusing. It could be spelled out a little more clearly. You'll see that. You'll see things where if there wasn't enough detail, we put some detail in to help guide folks that are consuming the bylaws to make it easier to understand and know what to do. And then we've taken on some work to, you know, to kind of make it a little more, kind of enhance the ability to create more housing. So obviously, the first one is fairly straightforward. It just kind of describes, you know, what the flood damage prevention district is in terms of an overlay. So if people don't really know too much about that, it's really, people like to think about my parcel is in this district and so I can go and look at what that means and figure out what that is. But we have a number of overlay districts and the flood damage prevention one is one of those that would kind of beat requirements above and beyond what's in your, the district or your parcel. So really, that's just a clarification. We want to help people understand what that was. The next one was for the-
Hugh, can we ask questions as we go along?
Absolutely, yeah.
The only reason I'm bringing it up is because the ones that are highlighted in red are the ones that have changed or something.
Yes, pay attention to the red mostly, only, I guess.
Well, you get to a place where it's all red later on.
Yeah, I know about that one.
But what was the genesis of this one, the first one, where it says that the Development Review Board is empowered to determine that an area is not in the floodplain? I mean, how does that work?
Yeah, so that's actually the second one, 214B, which is, you know, hey,
Okay, yep.
Let's let the, let's give the DRB some authority to make some discretionary decisions about information that's in the floodplain fringe area. So I'll pass it on.
Yeah, I'm making you pass it on. Just because I'm the guy who has to drive this and there are some parts of the floodplain in town that are, were mapped with boots on the ground. They were actually mapped by people who made measurements. And then there are some parts of the floodplain in Chester that are so-called zonA. And they were basically, back in the 1970s, there were some people in a basement in Texas that just kind of put magic markers over maps. So they're very, very imprecise. And there are things like hummocks and hills and stuff like that. And so I started out with this, basically saying that I would have the power for minor structures to do this. The DRB didn't like that. They thought it should be their power. And then we got some input that maybe it should only be exempt structures. Now, you have to realize an exempt structure is something like a children's playset or something like that. But technically, if you're in floodplain, those are supposed to be anchored because they can get swept downstream and do damage. So that's what it kind of ended up being. I'm of the opinion right now that it's so mild as to be, maybe not that useful, but then also it's not that threatening either.
It's just for exempt structures?
Yeah. Right now, it's just for exempt structures. I have seen bylaws where you can go as far as having like a two-stall garage, you know, under a provision like this.
And that being exempt?
But that is not where the Planning Commission went with it.
So it's to give people a little more leeway about putting up things that are not really going to be-
I'll also say that there was a feeling for a long time that Uncle Sam would never have the money to upgrade these flood maps. I told you they're from the 70s. But there is now an effort through some of the high-quality imagery that you can get from satellites and whatever else to update these maps. It won't be boots on the ground, but they will show, they'll look a little more like Swiss cheese and not just a swipe, you know, because that's the way the train is.
So is there a, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Is there a size limitation? So I'm thinking about a knoll or a hummock or something or other. And I'm just wondering if there's a specific size that would kick it out of the floodplain zone? You know, is it an acre, 1,000 square feet? Yeah, I'm just wondering. So you said two-car garage. I mean, you can fit a two-car garage on a fairly small piece of land, but is that, does that kick it out of that floodplain or would it still require an exemption?
No, there's no size limit. Just drawing from experience, there is this thing called a LOMA, a Letter of Map Amendment, that FEMA will issue if an engineer does it, that will remove certain spots from the floodzone. And quite often, those spots they remove are just a footprint around the building and that's all. So no, I don't think there's any size limit. I've seen them be pretty small.
Okay, thank you.
Just one thing I'll add though to that is, you know, the exempt structure is 144 square feet. So you can't get anything too big.
Right.
Once it gets bigger than that, the DRB doesn't have the-
We will get to this, the part where the page is all red, is listing what, is defining what an exempt structure is. But it's true. There's various definitions, but one of them is if you had a garden shed or something and it's less than 12 by 12, it would be considered an exempt structure.
Okay.
Yeah, but not, can't fit a car in that.
Right.
Well-
A smart car.
Might fit subcars, yeah.
My only question was regarding the floodplain designations. What is the ultimate authority? So here in Chester, we can decide through the DRB what's okay and what's not. You've referenced FEMA. I'm aware of insurance requirements. What is the governing body of floodplain designation?
I, at one time, carried my certification as floodplain administrator. I did let it lapse, but I do know quite a bit about it. Curiously, FEMA sets the rules.
Okay.
They delegate it to the state. The state has delegated it to the towns.
Okay, thank you.
It's not something towns want, but they have been given it. So we in the towns have to follow FEMA's rules, but we're the ones through our DRB that issue flood permits.
Thank you.
And I guess I will say that the state is given the opportunity to comment on anything that comes before DRB for flood, but it's considered a comment. And ultimately, if towns misbehave and let too much happen and don't follow the rules, they can penalize you and threaten to take away your flood insurance. But that doesn't happen, and it won't happen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Preston. Okay, so that brings us to basically the third line, which is 3.1. And that one is basically allowing the DRB to approve a second accessory dwelling unit on residential property. So today, you can have one ADU. And going forward, we're suggesting with DRB approval, you can have a second. So that was one example of, let's try to figure out where it makes sense, how people can have additional housing on their, you know, on their property. So that's what that one is.
So something like that, that's basically, it went from a single family, a one accessory dwelling unit, two-family, so now it's three-family.
Well, I don't know if you really would consider it, you know, three-family. If you imagine that, you know, the primary structure is the residence, an accessory dwelling unit has restrictions in terms of its size and proportion to the-
To the main one.
Yeah, it can. It's separate. It's not attached and it, I don't think it's attached. But there's size restrictions in terms of, you know, making sure that you don't basically get two houses on a single lot. And this is just saying, hey, you know, if you're going to allow a residence in one ADU, let's let the DRB approve a second ADU as a way, basically, to start creating opportunities for more density.
But it's families. I mean, you could have a different person in each one.
Yes, absolutely.
You might have size restrictions and all these other restrictions, but it's basically a three-family or a two-family or back to the one.
Yep.
To put this in context, for someone like me that's been involved in the planning and zoning world in Vermont all of my life, it's all of my career, it's been like whiplash because for the longest time, everything was about protect and preserve. Now, suddenly, it's like we've created this paradise that no one can afford to live in and you've got to reform your, you know, I mean, our, the grant we got from the state is called Bylaws Modernization and Reform. They want you to modernize and reform your bylaws. And the mantra that's, that I hear from the planning agencies is all about infilling your communities and increasing density. And the Planning Commission has talked about the fact that there might be some neighbors that aren't really thrilled about that, but it is, it is the way things are going and it feels like, well, it's a decision that you have to make, but yes.
So can I ask a question about that? What's the benefit to infilling and increasing density? Or why is the state pushing that? Let me just put it that way.
Well, the trends now are, it's very much caught up in a kind of an equity debate, the fact that to build a house in the rural parts of Chester is very, very expensive. You know, between putting in your sewer system in the house, you drop half a million easy. So it's all about like walkable neighborhoods, the 20-minute community where you can reach any service you need within 20 minutes, people having more affordable options. The other benefit, too, is that it's more efficient to provide services like water and sewer in compact areas. So, you know, there are cynics and critics of everything, and some people call it the stack and pack, you know, that they're pushing everybody into these village centers. Others say that was kind of the New England way back in the day. I mean, you had farms outside the villages, but people were pretty packed and... So anyway, I think the DRB is responding to that. We have, as a for instance, legislature that's being considered right now that would basically say that you, in areas of water and sewer, you have to allow fourplexes on lots as small as one-fifth of an acre. So, and if that passes, it'll be like, you must do this. It's not even an option. So that's really what the trend is right now.
So when, when you, as a planning commissioner, are debating or discussing these things, how much are your hands tied by state requirements relative to pushing these types of planning decisions?
Right now, not much.
Okay.
These things are being considered at the legislature. They have not passed.
So, so, sorry to interrupt, but septic and well?
Yeah.
Lot size, are those, I know septic and well are pushed by the state. You have to have whatever they require for that.
Yes.
Lot size, that's our decision? Because I want to get back, sorry, I want to get back to your half-million dollar to build a house in a rural area. And while I don't disagree with you, I think that a lot of those costs are being forced upon us by somebody other than us. And so from that perspective, I'm wondering what we can do, what you guys can do as planners to ameliorate that.
Julie and I have had this conversation many times. It's been talked about at the League of Cities and Towns as well. The pushback from the legislature and the Agency of Community Development is saying, you know, you people in zoning are creating, you know, obstacles to housing. And we're like Act 250 and the septic rules are completing obstacles to housing.
Yeah.
And yet they're like, oh, no, no, you can't touch those. Oh, no. And, you know, Vermont does have, I've heard it said Vermont has septic rules that are at a magnitude of five times more strict than other states. I don't know if that's a fact. I've heard it. But they've been around that way for a long time. They've loosened it a little bit with the Presby Systems, but not too much. And so it's very common that a septic can cost 20, 40, 60,000. To sort of loop back slightly to your earlier question, in order to get a town plan approved, you must meet state planning goals, which is compact village centers surrounded by open space. And so if we reverted to the kind of zoning that we had 20 years ago where the whole town's one acre, they wouldn't approve it because they'd say, you're not, you're not carrying this out. But beyond broad strokes like that, we have quite a bit of flexibility to say what lot sizes are. But in building a house, the septic is a big factor, which we have no control over. The actual house itself, I mean, building costs are very high, but then on the other hand, you know, there are alternative structures that you can do. I don't know, I don't want to ramble, but I will say, I very often get questions from people that say, I want to build a yard, I want to build a hay bale house, I want to put up a tiny house. And I'll say, no problem for me, but you still need a septic system. And then they often look into that and walk away.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we're on 3.11, which is the fourth line down. And those, that one and the one after it sort of go together. It's really basically allowing for a home occupation, two non-resident employees in home occupation. So today in a home occupation, it's just whoever is a resident in the home. And we're suggesting to allow a home occupation to have that plus two non-resident employees. And then the complement to that, right below it, is in the home business. Currently, you're allowed four non-resident employees and we're suggesting bumping that up to five.
Can you just give us a little insight as to why those numbers?
Well, I don't think there's any science really behind whether it's, you know, two or three or four or five, but for the home occupation anyway, I think the reality is it's possible for somebody to have a home occupation where they also have an employee. And that employee doesn't live there.
I'm just wondering why going from four to five? I mean, is that?
Well, I don't, you know, Preston, I don't know if we, I don't remember discussing the rationale other than just, you know, we're giving a little on home occupation, so let's give a little on home business, too, just to make it more flexible. But maybe you've got another-
You know, in terms of my experience, saying zero employees for home occupation is kind of hard, that because it just, and I think you know that. For home business, I wouldn't say it's all that big a deal about four or five, but I did sort of an informal survey of looking at other towns and other bylaws, and five was a number that was coming up a lot.
Okay. So just help me understand this. So if somebody had a home business and they wanted six employees, then what?
Well, and I think what this little summary doesn't say is a home occupation is something I get to approve administratively. A home business does go before the DRB. So the neighbors get a chance to say, hey, you know, what the heck's going on with my neighbor? There is a point at which a home business outgrows its site. I think one example I like to use is Hetty Topper Beer started out in someone's house and it didn't take too long before the neighbor said, this is outrageous. People are parking all up and down the road to get this beer. So, I mean, there are times when you just ultimately have to say you need to find another site.
Okay, thank you.
It's actually a good problem, but still.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm not disagreeing. I just was curious what the next step would be. Thank you.
Okay, so the next one is really, we did a little work on fences and this is one aspect of that. It basically says if you have a fence that's exempt, it's okay to put that fence on the property line. So you don't really have to follow any setbacks.
So, I know, I keep sniping the mic, but anyway.
There's another mic here.
Because this is very brief, let me just add some additional detail. You know that the town did hire Brandy Saxton to work on our bylaws in the past. And she came up with a very dense document that was a little more than what people, or at least some people, were ready for. But she did have a lot of good things in it. And right now, our current bylaw says you're exempt if you've got a fence that's six feet or less. You can just put it up anywhere, you're exempt. She kind of came up with the idea that in the village, it would be nice if front fences were four and a half feet high, not six, which if you think about it, would be quite a slap in the face for someone in the village to put up a six-foot fence on a sidewalk. And then in the elsewhere, we went to eight feet, which is a little high, but it's the recommended height to screen from junk, which is a problem that we have. And I had a little problem with the existing bylaw where, I won't name names because we're at a public session, but I asked people to put in a six-foot fence and it didn't screen the junk. You can just look over the fence. So eight feet is more the, is more the recommended height for that kind of thing. So that's where, the other thing is that it said a fence over six feet, this current bylaw, you know, needs a permit, but it didn't give any criteria for what that permit would be. And believe it or not, there have been people who have built spite fences that are like 20 feet tall. So we now have some criteria in there for the DRB to say, no, for some fence, that's ridiculous.
So, sorry, just to clarify, fences and walls that are not exempt, so that's what you were just talking about, something like above eight feet? Or are they all exempt now? Because I was-
Right now, if, in the village, if it was above four and a half feet and anywhere elsewhere in town was above eight feet, you would have to go to the DRB, yes.
Okay. And where does it say that here? Because it's not in that number 10.
Well, there's, on Article 3, page 11, it does say that fences are not exempt, require approval by the Development Review Board and must demonstrate screening, safety, or security purpose. And are required to meet setbacks, by the way. That's also, if it's going to be that hot. To actually see what it says about fences is going forward, but that's okay, which is now Article 4, page 5, and it's item 14.
Okay, thank you. I knew I read it somewhere. I just couldn't remember where it was. Thank you.
You know, it's, we're trying to take abstract concepts and put them in legal writing and it's always a, always a challenge.
I have one question. Were fences not more than four feet tall or four and a half feet tall if located in the front yard? Did those exist previously? Are we, is, are you proposing to add that?
That is new.
Okay.
Yes. What existed previously was just a blanket statement that any fence, if it's six feet or less, is exempt. No, no permit.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm not going to take the mic too much on this one because these next two, we spent a lot of time talking about these and they can be a little confusing, but, so the next one is really allowing the DRB, there you go.
There we go.
Allowing the DRB some latitude when it comes to reducing setbacks on non-conforming lots. So there is a scenario that if you're in a district that has a minimum lot size of a certain thing, but you happen to have a lot from the past that was smaller or non-conforming, you could get into a situation where you really couldn't do anything with that lot because of the setback requirements. So this change allows- So this change allows the DRB to make a decision about setbacks using something like a ratio, a ratio of the size of your lot to the minimum lot size for that zone in a way that gives the DRB some wiggle room so that the property can actually be used as opposed to just, you know, stranded. There is some checks so that you know, you'll never get in a situation where the setback is reduced to less than 10 feet or that it would cause some kind of an obstruction, you know, from a traffic point of view. So that's, that's the spirit of that one, which is 3.19A1.
And that's a lot that doesn't have anything on it? That's just a lot?
Well, not necessar, Hugh did a good description, but I'll just say that, for instance, since the trend is towards bigger and bigger minimum lot sizes, most of the town right now is what's called R-120, which is basically a three-acre zone. And it's a 50-foot setback from the shoulder of the road and from any boundary. A non-conforming lot is a lot that was approved, that was created either before zoning came into being or was approved when zoning had smaller lot sizes. And there are a few lots where when you measure 50 feet from every boundary, there's not too much left. And right now, there's just nothing that the DRB can do. I mean, the test for a variance is very strict. And so we spent quite a bit of time on this, but as, as Hugh said, we started out thinking of fairly simple answers and then we ended up ultimately just allowing the setback to be reduced as a ratio of the lot size. So I think it's a, I think it, I don't think it's anything to be, I don't think it's going to have any alarming consequences, but there it is. I can also say that there's a lot of opinions about setbacks. I mean, right now, this 50-foot setback, some people say, well, why? Why isn't it 30? What's the difference? And it's a judgment call, but I mean, it is a fair question. Like, how much more protection does a neighbor get with a 30-foot setback versus a 50? I don't know. So anyway, that was our compromise on that. The next one, which I might as well just keep talking about, is, is a concept that's, might seem a little shocking, but boy, it just comes up all the time. You have this requirement for a 50-foot setback from the edge of the road, and yet there are many, many traditional, you know, houses that are right on the road. And so for those people, and Hugh happens to be one, maybe he can recuse himself on this, or he can, the only option you have is put an addition on the back. And what this says is that as long as you don't increase the degree of non-conformity, meaning you could put an addition on the side, as long as it isn't any closer to the road than what the house is right now. So that's what this does. And it's, it's a fairly, you know, we didn't make this up. A lot of towns have this provision, but that's what that is. And then there's an illustration in there to try to, which I borrowed from another region, but to try to sort of help you visualize what that means.
Yeah, so basically that setback, whatever it is, that non-conforming setback carries through for the rest of the property, so you.
Well, well, it would be only for an addition to an existing building, yes.
But not a new building or anything like that?
No.
Just.
No, just, just an addition to an existing building. Yeah.
Moving on. The next one is really just some updates to the parking requirements. So the document referenced Enabling Better Places, a zoning guide for Vermont neighborhoods, has a different set of guidance for, you know, for how many parking spaces you need and, and for what reasons and where. So we really just looked at what we had versus what that guidance recommended and it made sense, so we really just switched that out, is what I recall. But Preston, do you have anything else to?
You know, another thing that the state agencies and the legislature seem to be hitting quite a lot is that we used to have a very car-centric culture and it was very common to have big parking space requirements to accommodate cars. And so now the, the trend is, is that we shouldn't be, you know, we should be thinking less about the car and that parking spaces are, you know, wasteful of, you know, they just waste space. And so there's this push to make the parking spaces less. And Enabling Better Places is, is a document that the state of Vermont puts out and encourages towns to use. It's not that much different than what we had, but it does say for, actually for, you know, your typical single-family apartment, our current bylaw says two spaces, this one says one space. So, I mean, yeah, will that be a problem? Maybe, but it is, it is the trend that people are going.
The next one is, is really just a clarification or a note related to renewable energy facilities. Basically, it just says that, you know, the zoning bylaws don't really have, you know, get to say much about that. It's a, it's a state matter, so we're just putting, shedding some light on that in the bylaw to make it clear.
I thought that already was part of our, not necessarily clear in the bylaws, but, I mean, that's a state requirement, right?
Yep. It was probably somewhere, I think, I think what this thing is, you'll, you'll find we added a note to a section of the bylaw to sort of make it a little more obvious in a place where people might be looking.
Well, just, sorry to tell stories, but several years ago, one of my neighbors was wanting to put in a solar array in his yard and their contractor was telling him, well, we need a permit, we need a permit. Or somebody at town was telling, I don't remember what the deal was. And it's like, no, you don't need a permit. So thank you for clarifying this because it'll make my life easier.
It, we, we have a section about how to renew, how to review renewable energy facilities. And the strange thing about the law is if somebody wanted to put in solar panels that were not net metered, they wanted to have them for their own exclusive use, they would have to get a zoning permit. But if they're net metered, the state law says they're exempt. So we have this provision in the bylaw, so we put a note in front of it and this was something when Kathy was in the interim that confused her, so she was an advocate for saying, why can't we make this clearer? So there it is.
So, so just to clarify, if, because I'm off the grid, I have solar on my roof, I'm not net metered.
Okay.
So I would have to get a permit for that?
You know.
Let me just tell you where I'm coming from, Preston.
I mean, the reason why I'm shaking my head is not because I don't want to say, oops, you got away with it. It's more that if it's on your roof, it really hasn't increased the footprint of the building. It doesn't turn my crank too much, but if there are pedestals out in your yard, I would probably say, yeah, you know, if it's not net metered, if it's just for you, you probably need a permit.
Okay. Hypothetical.
Yep.
The state basically penalizes people who are off the grid because we don't get the rebates, we don't get the credits, we don't get anything that comes with federal or state dollars. We get punished for doing the right thing or being cheapskates, whatever you want to call us. The point is that I, I would hate to see the town fall into that trap by saying, you want to put up a pedestal in your front yard to make more power so you can be using less fossil fuel, but I'm going to ding you for the permit and all of that stuff. Just something to, just something to think about. Not that I'm playing to do that, but I.
I acknowledge your point, and yet I'll just say that the bylaws are currently written that way and we just put a note to say, by the way, if you're net metered, you don't have to worry about this part.
Yeah. Well, that's good to clarify because I wasn't really thinking about the whole CPG aspect of it. So I would have assumed if I wanted to put up a ground mount at my house, I would have assumed that would have been good, but that would have been incorrect.
Yeah, I was always under the impression that no matter what solar array you put on, if it wasn't on your roof, that a permit would be required and it went through those channels, but I guess not then, right?
Yeah, I mean, I, I have not run into this in Chester. I have run into it in other towns because the state process, they don't notify neighbors. I mean, they have a website that if you, unless you're clairvoyant, you don't know to look at it. And occasionally these pedestals will show up 25 feet from the boundary. I know, I remember one case, this woman had a view out of the valley and the pedestal shows up and they said, no, it's exempt, state approved it. You know, so, yeah. It, these exemptions can, can sometimes be a problem.
Yeah, and not, again, not to tell stories, 10 or 12 years ago, we did a couple of pole mounts, same thing. Neighbors complained about the view because it wasn't their view shed. So I get it and, you know, I try to encourage my customers to be thoughtful of their neighbors as we all should be, but, yeah.
One of Barry Pinsky's many colorful statements is that zoning is just there to make us good neighbors.
It's true.
So if you had a hot water system that was on a pedestal outside your house or on your roof because none of those are net metered, you'd have to have a permit?
Unless it was 100, under 122 square feet.
There you go. You can have a solar array if it's under 122 square feet.
Well.
Actually, that.
And it depends on how it's tipped.
I, I will say that that provision for exempt structure also says not taller than 12 feet. So we kind of, it might bite you in that way.
I think we better be careful what we allow or not allow at this point.
I appreciate the clarification because I think this is going to come up more and more as, as people start thinking about, how do I reduce my energy bill?
Yeah.
So, thank you.
And, you know, I mentioned before that it's all about trade-offs and there are certain things that the state has exempted from zoning, which including, you know, cell phone towers and, you know, energy, because they think local communities will be nimbyism and not allow it. So they basically say, we're going to take that away. That's exempt, you can't stop it. And that was a choice, a very conscious choice.
Okay, moving on to the next one, which is really just that, as everybody I'm sure probably knows, the town of Chester has, has an ordinance to regulate short-term rentals, but in discussions with Jim Carroll, he indicated it's really important to, in the bylaws, at least make note of that and, and cross, you know, reference the information in the bylaws to the fact that the town has an ordinance. So it's really just more of a, you know, you know, crossing the Ts and dotting the Is. So it basically, you'll see that it just says, short-term rentals are regulated by the town ordinance, so. Now we're getting to the one where there's like three pages of red ink. So this, you know, I'm going to say just a few, one or two things about this and then I'm going to turn it over to Preston. I'm not really sure of the best way to go through this. Obviously, there's 29 things that were exempt that are, where they were proposing to be exempt. And I think the genesis for this change was in the existing bylaws, the exemptions were a little either lacking or ambiguous and it caused a fair amount of confusion and question about what people could or couldn't do. So one of the things that we did effectively harvest from the work that was done by Brandy Saxton, she had a pretty good list of things that were typically exempt. So we took that list, vetted it and plugged it in, and that's how you ended up with whatever you're seeing on that page that looks like there's a ton of red ink.
And I will just say by way, by way of introduction that Chester's current bylaw is remarkably brief on what it lists as exemptions and, but people call me all the time and they say, I want to put a, you know, propane generator beside my house, I want to put in a propane tank, I want to have my in-laws stay in a camper in the driveway, I want to put a statue in my backyard, you know, I want to put up an above-ground pool, my kids want a playset. And I just have to, just go by the, by the seat of my pants and say, well, you know, customarily, you don't have to have a permit for those things. But the bylaw just didn't say. And so since we're in the business of trying to clarify things, I know a list of 29 is like, oh, my gosh, 29 categories of things that don't need a zoning permit. But it is, it, it, it provides clarification and I thought Brandy's list was very comprehensive and I thought this was, I mean, occasionally when you get too specific, there are unintended consequences, but I, I just felt these were, these were the kinds of things that an experienced zoning administrator would normally say, no, you don't need a permit for that. So now the question is, do you want to go through each one or not?
I was just going to ask you if there are any of these that you think we should be concerned about?
I've looked through them and I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
But I'd be curious to know if you guys have a couple that you think are.
Well, I will say that I can tell you the ones that the planning commission chewed on the most.
That'd be great.
We'll do that and then we'll, we'll ask for questions. Right now, for instance, there's, the current bylaws, if you do a word search, the word pond's not mentioned and.
The word what?
Pond.
Thank you.
And many, some towns have very elaborate sections about what you can and can't do to build a pond. So number 13, we did basically come up with a definition of a pond and say what pond is exempt. Number 14, fences, we talked about that quite a lot.
Sorry, Preston. So number 13 talks about pools, not.
Number 12, number 12 is the pond.
12, yep.
Okay.
Well, the pools, they're.
Close, pool, pond, you know.
Yeah, and of course the pool is, I mean, some pools are very elaborate in-ground structures, not a cement. Some pools are things you get at Walmart and just set up. So, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, that's the kind of question. We talked a lot about number 19, which is the self-contained travel trailer or camper.
That's one of the ones I had questions about.
Yep.
So let me know if you want to do that now or later.
Let me just, I will absolutely talk about that. Yeah, 26, you know, which is food trucks. I mean, that's, yeah, we talked a bit about that. But I think, I'm happy to, to talk about campers. And there's, there's three ways that I've seen them handled. One is to treat them as a primitive camp and the state has a definition, which is a hunting camp, has a definition of a hunting camp and it can't be occupied more than 60 days of the year, which is two months. And then there's many towns will say you can have a camper that someone lives in for three months. But also the general feeling is that temporary structures are things that are used for six months, not more than six months. And that's kind of where the planning commission landed. I will say, and again, I won't mention names, there are some families in Chester that live in campers.
Yeah.
I'm a, you know, I'm a compassionate person and I have, I don't necessarily come down with a full weight of law on them. But, and I also know that the, I mean, state law says you're not supposed to live in camper. But the environmental enforcement officer from the state for our area also says, as long as they are dealing with their waste, you know, and not just dumping it on the ground, he said, I don't enforce them. So, I mean, that's that strange quandary. But we decided to just go with this wording. I don't know if that's where you were going with it.
Well, here's my question. I deeply appreciate everything you just said and it is the source of my question. At a time where we've spent the last 45 minutes talking about the need for housing and that the biggest crisis we're facing is affordable places for people to live, it feels tone deaf for this to be the moment where we add new regulation eliminating a current housing situation for current residents. So it just, I can see where it comes from and I think it would make a lot of sense if we weren't sitting here scratching our heads about how to house people. So that's where I find this one, if, was there any regulation in the bylaws? Was there any regulation in the bylaws previously addressing these units?
There is a, the state water quality rules, which in my humble opinion are a little ill-advised to say that you can't do it, but there was nothing in our own zoning saying that. And I had one instance where a neighbor didn't want someone on the next lot living there, and I had to say, "I don't have the authority," and the state chose not to enforce it. So, you make a very good point. And I will tell you again that I, I'm a compassionate person, and so I acknowledge what you're saying. But, so, now, this is the time when I can tell you that the state, in its wisdom, has limited the select board's power to say that if you choose to question a part of what's coming before you tonight, you don't get to just strike it and pass it. You have to send it back to the planning commission and ask them to reconsider.
Understood.
But, that being said, this is something the planning commission talked about quite a bit, and this is something that I, I think is a valid question to raise.
I voted for this, to put it through before, and it troubled me after that, just because of the housing crisis that we're in and the number of cases of people that I know are currently living in RVs. And it's, and at a time of a housing crisis, I really don't think you can push them out. I think that's just not the right thing to do.
It does feel contrary to the tone of everything else we're doing, which is adding housing opportunities, adding housing opportunities.
Yeah, I guess one thing I remember from the discussion that we had in the planning commission, and we did debate this for quite some time, was that, you know, it's not easy to, you know, to think about enforcement in terms of, "How are we going to know that folks that live in campers are dealing with their waste?" Right now, if, you can't hook a camper into the septic system, I don't believe. And that means they have to figure out how they're going to deal with their waste. We don't really have a process for that.
So, I'd like to chime in a little bit. When we dealt with this with Brandy a number of years ago, I was on Arianna's side. We talked about people living in shacks and so forth and so on. I'm like, "Why get in the way of someone that's just trying to survive?" And Brandy's point at the time was, "If you let people live at a certain level, sometimes they won't do something to better themselves, and it can create greater hardship." So, if someone doesn't have a proper heating system, doesn't have running water, and so forth and so on. So, the idea really isn't to punish people or make their lives more difficult. The idea is to keep people at a certain level also. So, what we're, you know, there's a couple of things that happen here. If you've got a bunch of people living in campers, this is not like a travel trailer that you can drive to Springfield and dump your waste. It's a camper that has to be towed. If they're sitting in one spot for a long time and they're not moving, all of the stuff that you would normally have, like running water and septic, is not happening. So, that was a lot of our talk about this. It isn't that we had an idea about lacking compassion. We're trying to get people to live at a certain standard of living, and, you know, I think there's other, there's other ways that we're looking at to provide housing for people that would be reasonable. I just wanted to add that, because I was kind of surprised that Brandy had that perspective, and when she talked about it that way, it kind of changed my mind a little bit.
That's interesting, Barry. Thank you for sharing that. I'd take a little bit of exception to that mindset, because basically, we're forcing people to possibly live beyond their means to better themselves. And I, you know, I'm with Preston. I'm trying to be compassionate where we help our neighbors out. And maybe the thing is, we put in something at our waste treatment plant where we can take septic from places like this instead of having to go to Springfield. I'm not sure what the answer is. I agree with you, Arianna, that this is probably not the time to, not necessarily not pass this, but the enforcement end of it is where I'm having a little bit of trouble, trying to figure out how we deal with situations where people are stuck because they don't have the income, they don't, there's no affordable housing in town, there's nothing that they can do. And how do we, as a community, deal with people who are less fortunate than we are in a compassionate way, when realistically, we're being told by the state, "You have to do this to protect the state's waters." You know, we have zero jurisdiction over the three rivers that go through town. And so, I understand that, yeah, we need to protect them, but also, I think, we're the ones who are better able to figure out how we deal with this particular issue than the people in Montpelier.
I'd like to add a comment, if I could.
Go ahead, Mr. Robert.
Thank you. Sorry about my voice. There's one aspect of this that we, I don't think we spent a lot of time talking about it, but it's an important consideration that there's an environmental aspect to this. And Barry almost got to that, but travel trailers, I've lived in a travel trailer. They're not designed to overwinter in a place like Vermont. They're not designed to manage wastewater over a long time. And even keeping running water going in our climate in the winter would be a serious challenge with a travel trailer. So, I think it's something, I don't disagree that we don't want to put people out. And I also, I don't like to be in a position where we're trying to dictate how people live, but the fact is that there's an environmental and a health aspect to this. And, you know, the town just went through a situation where a property was condemned for health reasons, and a lot of that had to do with the lack of wastewater. So, I just add that, and that's all I've got right now. Thank you.
It seems like the topic that you brought up regarding the travel trailers, maybe you could use some reexamination in the future, when this part of the approval process isn't done and stuff. It'd be good to revisit it, because like most people were saying, we're trying to increase dwelling units, accessory dwelling units, and this is one way to do it. Though there are challenges for it, people are living under those conditions and meeting those challenges somehow in Vermont. It's not the easiest, but maybe that's all they have. And we all acknowledge that we're trying to be helpful and compassionate with our neighbors, so it might be worth a revisit to see if this is where it fits in, or maybe there's a different way to define it, or to bring it into the picture, to make it a little more mainstream, as opposed to, "Sorry, if you're in a travel trailer, you're out. You could forget about it."
It just feel, I feel pretty strongly that at a time where our initiative is to increase housing inventory, that to take housing, taking something off that, a place for people to live. Again, it's the timing. If this was a different year, if this was a different, if it weren't for the fact that this is absolutely the hottest topic there is, it just feels tone-deaf to take something away.
And a lot of it probably is, we do have a little bit of leeway as far as enforcement goes, and I don't think we're going to be running out to see where the travel trailers are.
No, but that's a...
But, I know, I understand.
That we've got a lot of dangerous boundaries here. One is telling people how they need to live. That's not our job. And in choosing to enact something and then choosing not to enforce it also feels pretty sketchy, so...
Arianna, what's your recommendation? Does it strike number 19?
My personal opinion would be that it's not the time to add new regulation around living in trailers at a time when there's not enough places for people to live. So, if this was, if there's not something already in the bylaws, then yes, my recommendation would be to strike 19. But I understand, because Preston and Hugh were clear, we're not here to edit this. It's an all or nothing tonight.
Right, right. We are allowed to make minor changes, and what happens is, who decides whether it's a minor change, or a major change, or a major direction change as far as it goes? It does allow minor changes, and it does not define what a minor change is. In addition, like that, it's not really a correction or a change, it's just scratching it out. It wasn't there before, and it's not there now, so is that minor?
No, no, that's a major change to what they're proposing to you.
Well, yeah, but why don't, in that, okay, you could just strike minor things of that. A self-contained travel trailer, a camper, may be stored on a lot year-round. Strike. But occupancy of the trailer is not limited to 180 days in a calendar year. Then, everything else is there. You struck half of one sentence.
Have you changed the meaning and the content? Minor changes is referring to grammatical, is referring to those types of things?
I'd like to add one more thing, Arianna. So, we are allowing people to live in a travel trailer during the summer. For, I believe, six months, you could live in a travel trailer. And then, secondly, we also added that you can have more than one, I think up to three on a property. So, with respect to what you're saying, we are, we did make it easy, make it so that we could have more people living in them, and we also were thinking more of the snowbird scenario. So, in that case, if someone is living in a travel trailer, it may be in their best interest to take it somewhere warmer in the winter. So, I really appreciate your level of compassion. I just know that the amount of work that we put into this, and we're trying to move all these bylaws forward, I'm hoping that we can stay on that path, that this isn't that sensitive of an issue, that we derail the whole process of keeping these moving.
Why don't we keep, unless, if there's no further questions on this topic, we can proceed, and then we'll see where we are.
I have one more comment. I'm with you on this one.
Yeah, I'm with you, too. And it isn't necessarily, quote-unquote, derailing the process. If you send it back to the planning commission, they could act fairly quickly, and then we could advertise the hearing again. So, it puts it off a month, but it's not terrible.
Do you have to send it to all the other councils and everything again?
Um, probably.
You didn't, no transmission? No, I don't think...
You don't think so? Okay. We'll check.
You're going to be back again in a month with open spaces, and you can just combine it with that.
Well, you have to, why can't you...
No, I know you have to do the rest of the paperwork, yes.
It might be too late to piggyback on that, but we'll look.
But we could, you could...
Right, we can, the select board can.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I was just looking over the statute, and it, we could make a substantial change, it just starts the process of 10 days and a hearing, and again, and that we have to go through and stuff.
Oh, well, I thought I had to go back to the planning commission. You're saying it just has to be a second hearing?
Here, show Preston.
Yeah.
I think what you could do, I think Peter is right. If you've got more proposed changes coming, then loop this together. Link it together and send it back with the same.
Okay. So, you can have, you can warrant a final public hearing?
Right.
Okay. That's a little simpler. I mean, it does take almost three weeks to warrant a hearing, but still...
You could make the change.
I don't consider that to be unreasonable to do something that your feeling is tone, change something you feel is tone-deaf. Yep.
So, it would be the consensus of the board that they feel that strong enough about this number 19, that we would like it out to start this process?
Or to edit it.
Edit it, however we feel.
Okay. And I do, I want to say, I might not have pushed this so strongly if I was not aware of the fact, Preston, that you yourself said you guys struggled with it. So, I'm taking that, and I'm saying I feel much more strongly. So, thank you.
I have also been very, very troubled about this, and, again, because of, you know, when you meet families personally, and you think of going and telling them here now in violation, that's just not a pleasant thought. A few of the folks in the trade have told me that you can tell them to leave for two weeks and then come back, and the clock starts again. But it's, again, that's, that's just playing games. Yeah.
I'll be quiet after this, but the other thing that we have is, we have a perception of what people feel our community is like. And if people are coming into town and they see campers along the road with a bunch of junk around them, along with chainsaw carvers with a bunch of junk in their yard, it's an oppression on our town. So, we have a certain, you know, I don't want to be critical of people and their positions, but, you know, it's, and I don't want to sound like I lack compassion, but I know when Andrew Yang was going to offer everybody $10,000 to help boost our economy, I thought, "I'm going to go on vacation. I'm not doing anything." So, I think that there is something to, you know, having a strong community, having a certain sort of an aesthetic that we're trying to achieve, and keeping some rules so that things don't go downhill too far. And I think if we have a number of campers in public view with the people that are coming through that might stop at my gallery and buy my art, if they get the impression of our town, that's not what we want, that could have an effect on business also. So, I mean, it's a fine line that we're walking. Every time I drive by these places, I just want to go down around the back and see if there's a plastic hose down into the river, because I'm guessing that's what's going on. So, I'll stop.
Okay, so, are we done? I think we've got the message on that one in terms of...
We'll summarize it at the end, if that's the only change that comes along, and try to help you with some direction on that one that we have so far.
Yeah, I mean, we're happy to look at it.
I have one other question, but it doesn't bring up any blocking concerns. Regarding minor grading and excavation associated with road and driveway maintenance, are road crews and all that stuff are cool with this? Does that, does permitting, does allowing citizens to, sorry, if doing your own excavation in culverts is exempt, is that okay with the road crew? I couldn't figure out how to ask the question.
Which one is that?
Number 17?
Number 17. Yeah, that's why I said, I don't think it's a blocking concern. I just wanted to...
Well, I will tell you how I would interpret this, which is that the road crew has control over the part of the driveway that's within the highway right-of-way. And that's why they will control access points, and that's why they will require culverts. And so, my feeling is, zoning doesn't apply to what's within the road right-of-way, so I'm not concerned about that.
This is me just carving out the side of my driveway so that the water runs off better.
So, this would be only applying to things that are outside of, you know, I mean, it is clear in statute that what's inside the road right-of-way is the exclusive jurisdiction of the select board. And so, I have that problem all the time. People put a fence up in the road right-of-way, put a sign up. I say, "You can't do that," but it's the select board that could tell you otherwise. So, I just don't, no, I haven't asked the highway crew, but I just don't think this would concern them.
Yeah, the intention is for areas that don't hit the road. It's for your own roads and road, great. Thank you.
Part of the wording in there is culvert replacement. So, if there's already a culvert there, that's usually been approved by the road commissioner if it's in that area on the end of your driveway. So, if there's a replacement...
Yeah, and the point of it, of an exemption is to say, "Is it really necessary for someone to come visit me and pull a zoning permit to replace a culvert?" And if it's on their own property, they can have whatever size culvert they want. And if it's on their own property, they can have whatever size culvert they want, and if it's within the highway right-of-way, it's gonna be 18 inches, because that's what state law requires. So, I mean, it's just kinda, I don't think it's a problem.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that big, long list of exemptions? Okay, then, moving on, the next one is really just to make a clarification in the performance standards on the air pollution one, to include smoke and odor. And, I think the next probably three or four are related to, kind of, everything's from 410, which is guidance on planned unit development, down through 4.12G, are really related to clarifications on planned unit development and different sorts of waivers. So maybe we want to spend a little bit of time on some of those. Preston, you can probably elaborate, I remember we talked about 4.112 a little bit.
Yeah, I'll simply say that planned unit development is something that's allowed by statute. Big communities use planned unit developments a lot. Smaller communities like Chester and the type that I usually work for hardly ever. But, I had had some experience with training where people said planned unit development, well, I'll put it this way, I've had people come to me and say, you know, "I'd like to buy this 30-acre property, put a little compound, you know, for my group of people, or my family, or whatever." And, you can't do that. Everything's gotta have its own lot, and it's gotta be to meet the setbacks. But you can do that through a planned unit development. And, we had in our current bylaw planned unit development section that looks just like what you'd expect to be in a bigger community, where it's expected that it's for a developer developing a site. So, we softened it up so that it actually is a tool that average folk, and not just big developers, can use. The idea of a planned unit development is it does, you still have to meet the same density requirement, but you can cluster your buildings in one place instead of scattering them out around the lot. So, I think without taking a deep dive, you'll just have to believe me that we softened the wording to, so that I'm in a better position to say to somebody who wants to do something like this, like, "You know, we can do this. It's got some work, you've got to develop a community septic system and a few things, but it is possible to do this. Have to get the DRB approval."
Any questions on that one?
Nope.
So, if I go to 5.2, I'll just jump down to 5.2, and that really is a change that was related to, basically, we had some content in the bylaws that was in conflict with the Chester's road standards. So, we reconciled the conflicts between those two documents, and we also basically removed the ability for the DRB to waive road requirements, because at the end of the day, that's a requirement that needs to go to the highway department and not the DRB. So, we really just basically said, "You have to follow the road standards," and the DRB isn't allowed to give you a pass on that, so...
I mean, normally, I'm a guy that goes for flexibility, but we had here where the DRB had the right to waive road standards, and road standard are a big deal nowadays about stormwater, and I think, you know, and grade, and ditching, and culverts, and this was, Peter brought this to our attention, but I think we all agreed that this is just one of those things you don't want to waive just because you want to let some guy develop their land, because you're just gonna have, I mean, these things that are over 14% are just gonna be nothing but a problem.
I apologize. Is there a similar body that governs roads? Or is roads more of a black and white, it's just done this way?
So the road and bridge standards are adopted by the select board, they're enforced by our highway commissioner.
Okay.
But they're basically state standards.
But they're basically state standards, yeah.
And so if someone did want to create a road, and they went to Preston, and Preston said, "That's not us, that's not the DRB," they're gonna come to the road commissioner?
Correct. And then we govern certain types of roads, we don't...
Yeah, I think the thing to remember is that there are private roads and there are public roads. And so, now the DRB has to say, if someone's establishing a private road, you have to build to the same standards as a public road. That's really what it says.
Is that new?
No.
Okay.
It's not new, there was a provision in there that...
If you said you have to meet the standards was the formal...
Right, there was a provision in there saying the DRB could waive certain standards, and we took that out. That's all it is.
But it's a private road.
The town does not regulate private roads.
Yeah.
No, there's a standard, and it regulates more than three driveways, that's what it says in the standard.
Then it becomes a town, then they can petition the town to take over the road.
They can, but when, if you, if you make a driveway that has three lots, that only has access, that the frontage is on those roads, on your proposed road, you have to build the road to the town standard, the town does not have to take the road over. Yep, this is through subdivision review. If you're creating a private road through subdivision review, it says...
You're not dumping this onto the town to regulate a private road.
No, no. What we're saying, what it, we were, what this does is refers to what the town says a road needs to be. That's what it is. If it's not, if you want to read the road standards and say you want to change it, that's a different thing. This is, what this says is, we had conflicts between the two documents. So rather than have a conflict, because you could change the road standard at any time, which is what the select board has the power to do, what this document refers to for any road, you have to look at this. Now, if it says it's a driveway and you don't have to do anything, then you're all set. But just, it took all the questions out of it. Here's the one document that's a standard, you have to follow that. And the town road standard calls out roads that are not made, you don't have to build to a standard, and it calls out what has to be built to a standard.
So, the part that I got lost in is, if it serves three driveways, well, then I understand, then it's more than just a driveway, it's a development. But other than that, if it's two driveways, then it doesn't matter. Or if it's just your own driveway, it doesn't matter.
It's, you'd have to re, it's in, it's in, it's an ordinance.
Well, if I'm doing my own property, and I want to put in a road to my barn up on the hill, I gotta make it up the road to town standards?
No, no, no.
Serving more than one dwelling.
So if there's two dwellings?
Yep, serving more than one dwelling must meet Chester's road standards.
Yeah, I have to say that that is correct, that basically a private driveway serves one dwelling. Anything more? No, I want to assure you, Julie, that the town's not on the hook for anything here. It's just that the DR...
They can't petition to take, for the town to take it over until there's three.
But, the DRB, it's part of their subdivision process that if a subdivision includes building a road, they approve the road. And so by saying it has to meet town road standards, that means the grade, the width, and the ditching, and the culverts have to be to town road standards.
Who's certifying that they're to town road standards?
That's the interesting thing, the DRB tells you, this is, you know, you have to design the road to town road standards so that we can give you your subdivision permit, but once you get your subdivision permit, yeah, nobody really...
Okay, because I'm, because my highway guys are not going out to certify that a private road has been built to town road standards.
I mean, technically, I'm your enforcement agent, but I mean, yeah, yeah, I mean, but it does mean certainly that, there are a few private roads in town that are very steep, and chronic problems, and that wouldn't be allowed under a modern subdivision.
Because of the grade, because of the...
Because of the grade.
Yep.
I know Barry wants to talk.
Sorry. I want everyone to be aware, too, that I believe when we talked about this, there were some references to firefighting. Is that true? Peter, we had references to firefighting, and they had to be...
In Brandy's document, there was. And this, what we, what Brandy made a separate, her document did not match the road standards for the town, and it didn't match any, so the easiest way, rather than to make a standard, is referred to what the town, what the town wants, what the town requires currently in their standards. If the town, if that ordinance says it's not required, then it's not required. Now, the DRB, when somebody puts in a road, the DRB can say, the engineer who designed the road, well, could, needs to certify that that's what's there. And it's the same with what happens in a wastewater system. But, the thing was not to create two conflicting standards. The thing was, you have a town ordinance that already describes what a road is, and who needs it, and who doesn't, and what it has to be. Take that off the DRB's plate because you have the ordinance. If, for instance, the town of Chester decided to change culvert sizes, you'd have to go back and change the bylaw to match that up. So by referring to the different document that can be updated all the time, it takes that all off the table, and the confusion isn't there.
I understand, but what I really want to make sure of is that, since everything is now dumping to that document, that that document is stating very clearly what is and is not required for private road.
Well, we can certainly review that document. It certainly hasn't been updated, I think they do its names on it. And I do have to say that all we're doing here is taking out the DRB's ability to waive certain rights. You're supposed to build roads to those standards anyway. I will say also, some towns regulate driveways to single houses, and their rationale is, we have to get a fire truck up there, and we don't want to have a single house that's all, you know...
There's been years of discussion over this. There's a lot of history with this topic, which is why I'm a little defensive of it.
Yep.
There's been a lot of history around this. So, I just don't want something getting dumped back liability-wise on the town for private roads, private driveways, that we do not, nor have we ever regulated. Is it? 5.2, is that what it is?
Article 8, page 8. Thank you. Oh, new definitions.
Oh, it's the last page.
Yep.
Yeah.
It's my understanding, no matter what the road is, the town doesn't have to take it on.
No.
No.
You have to petition.
Petition, they could petition for the town to take it on, but the town could turn around and say, "No, we don't want to deal with it."
Right, no, that's absolutely correct.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I think, understanding that, you know, if there needs to be language added to the town road standards about, you know, roads they're accountable for and not, you know, maybe that needs to be looked at, but I think the spirit of this was basically, we shouldn't have road standards in multiple documents that conflict, number one. Number two, if you're gonna build a private road, and it's gonna serve more than one lot, make it meet the Chester's road standards, so that if you need to get an ambulance, or a fire truck, or whatever it is, to one of the properties on that lot, you have a chance. So that was the spirit of this change. If there's something that needs to be done to kind of tie off accountability, or responsibility for enforcement, then I'm not, then, yeah, maybe that needs to be looked at, but I think that's what we were shooting for when we, when we put this in.
I would just want it to be clear that the certification of whether or not it meets that is not on the town.
Right.
And whether or not that can take place within the road and bridge standards by themselves, but, I mean, if the DRB is requiring something be built to this standard, then somebody's gonna need to certify it's built to that standard, and I don't want that to be the town.
Well, I think there's probably a difference between identifying requirements, and then certification and validation. We identify a lot of requirements, not everything. A whole bunch of things that never get validated.
Yeah, but we could, you, you could easily put that, you know, because you're gonna come back again, so it's easy enough to put a note in the beginning in the new roads. I was about to say that if you're planning to come back again for one thing, you just, Julie, you just need to, I mean, I don't think it's a problem, but you need to feel comfortable with it.
Yeah.
And you need to read it, and if you think some words need to be put in there, we'll do it.
This has come up in the past, so I do think that if we can just make it clear that it's not on the town to certify that, then...
And what exactly is that paragraph or that phrase that we're talking about to change or add?
If you look at Article 5, page 4...
Article 5. Access road, or are we...
It's item K modification of road standards.
Right over here. Remove this. This is all removed.
Oh, okay, yep.
But the other thing is that on Article 5, page 2, there was this wording that said the road standards applied to roads to be taken over by the town, and we crossed that out and said, "It applies to roads serving more than one lot," since that's what the definition says. So those are the two changes, and if, yeah, it's probably the change on Article 5, page 2, Julie, that would be the one that where you might want to put something in there saying, "Notwithstanding, this is not the town's responsibility," or something like that.
On the first A part. That makes sense right here.
I really think the modification paragraph that we're eliminating is not very significant, but that particular paragraph, which is 5.2A, new roads, you might want to say something to be completely clear.
Yep.
But the bottom line is, the DRB does approve roads, private roads, as part of its subdivision process, and I think you can't take that out, it's more a matter of just saying that a DRB approval is not the same thing as a town obligation.
So, what, is the concern liability, Julie? I guess I'm not getting the, I'm not getting the bottom line on this.
My concern is liability, and taking on regulation of roads that will never be town roads.
So, I gotta want to drag this on and on. So, any sort of regulation that we have, when, I don't know how to say this, once Preston gives a building permit, he does go back to check to see if the people are building accordingly, like they say they're gonna have storage, and then it ends up being an apartment, then there's a violation. So how, if the DRB says these roads need to be built this way, so that it works for fire and rescue, and people aren't sliding backwards out in the street because it's too steep, you're saying that we don't want to have to regulate that because there's a liability concern there?
Well, there's things within that, well, there is. I mean, if this is a private road, there's potentially, right? So if this is a private road, and we're saying build it to the road and bridge standards, which don't even apply to private roads, and my guys go out and mismeasure a width, I mean, there's all kinds of potential there. I just, I, and I'll talk to Kirby about it, you know, maybe I am just blowing it into something it's not. We have never regulated private road and driveways in this town because of liability issues. So, that's what I have always been told for the 20 years I have worked for this town. This is not new. So I'm gonna hear it from somebody in my highway department that I'm not concerned about it. That's what I'm gonna hear it from.
Right on.
I trust, I trust my highway department to tell me.
So, the goal of this, Julie, is that when somebody brings a subdivision to the DRB that involves a new road, they have to have a surveyor and an engineer, and we're going to tell them, "You have to design that road to town road standards, or we won't approve your subdivision." The goal is not to say, "And by the way, our highway crew's gonna follow up," but make sure you do it. That's not what we're proposing.
I know. I understand.
So there's no, there's no onus or anything with the town highway crew, or anything with it?
It's never been done that way, and it's not my intent that it would be.
They have had private roads come back and ask us to certify that their road was built a certain way. We're not doing that, and I want it clear, we're not doing that.
Well, that's a decision that would be made...
I had that once...
Whatever they apply to.
...here in Chester, because Act 250 said, "You will build it to town road standards, and the town will certify it."
I don't, no, I...
That was, that was Brookside, yeah.
No, that wasn't, it was south of town.
But, but anyway, but no, I certainly, whatever you want to put in there, Julie, to just make this clear.
I would be more comfortable if I could just talk to the highway department, and if we could take a look at our own standards, and make sure... And if we could take a look at our own standards, and make sure that, that we're all copacetic. I don't want to sit here and say that we are or we aren't. I would rather have my highway department look at it. Sorry to be a pain in the butt.
That makes sense.
Twenty years of debate over this topic, and I'm not gonna just suss it off.
Yeah, it's no, it's no problem.
You're not the first pain in the butt, so you're all set.
I know, Peter.
Yeah, Arianna started it, so you're just, you know, we're good. No, no problem, we'll take care of it.
It was the people at the other end of the table. You're all right.
We'll look over that section of it, and check with the highway department, make sure it doesn't apply with us, or make sure everybody's happy with this at the end of it, because of whatever language that's in there.
I just wanted to make sure that I had.
That's fine.
Okay, we're getting to the end. The second to the last, which is 716, is just some language that allows the DRB some wiggle room from a waiver point of view, as it relates to either subsidized or nonprofit housing, or low and moderate income housing. So, in the current bylaws, the waivers are pretty strict, and unmovable, and fairly unflexible. So, we thought it would be good to create some latitude for certain kinds of housing. And, Preston, I don't know if you want to elaborate on that more, or...
Yeah, I'll just say that there's already the provision for waivers of subdivision requirements, and waivers of dimensional standards, which means you're setbacks. And there are criteria for it, and we've added one more criteria to say, to enhance or facilitate the provision of subsidized or nonprofit housing for low and moderate income residents.
So, how do you do that, if it's not specified? I don't, I'm a little confused on it.
I, I think the biggest, the biggest part of that is multiple, we were, we were not allowing before multiple principal structures. So you could only have really one main house on a piece of property. And what this does is it allows more than one principal structure. And it was the state of Vermont that kind of held us over this with wastewater before, because they wanted one house to have one septic system, and not multiple things. And that's what started this ball rolling way back in the 70s. And what this does is it allows more than one principal structure. So if you were going to have, you could have two apartment buildings, you know, Kathy had, with the example that, that was used before, was Kathy Hasbrook's property. She has space next to hers. Her one apartment house is already a principal structure. If you were to build another apartment house on there, that would be considered a second principal structure. So that kind of starts the ball rolling there.
So you could do that anywhere in town?
The way this is written, yes.
Except it says only for, if it's for low... For subsidized, nonprofit, low and moderate income residents. So the idea of someone, if there is a developer coming in to make money...
That's quite a bit, low and moderate income, and then you look at that, so basically, wherever you could put up one house, or one building, you could now put up two.
Right.
Well, but I think the thing that's a little bit important is it's nonprofit or subsidized. So it's not just a person decides, I'm gonna put two houses on my lot. It doesn't work that way. It has to be, basically, you know, an entity creating nonprofit or subsidized housing.
So what happens when the house gets sold? Or that property gets sold to a for-profit?
I don't think they do that, do they?
I don't really know. Anything is possible with lawyers and money.
Yeah, no, it is, the...
I'm cynical.
I certainly know that some subsidized housing contracts are valid for 10 years, which means after 10 years, you could possibly convert it into non-subsidized. And the answer is, once it's approved, yeah, it's there.
So is this something we want to try to address? I mean, to Arnie's point, all of a sudden, we get two buildings on every property in town, and that's okay. I mean, that's a...
We're trying to make it easier for, for housing.
Well, I'm just, my concern is that the law of unintended consequences may come to bear here, where we say, yeah, this is what our intention is, we want low and moderate income, or subsidized and nonprofit. And those have some definitions, but they're not necessarily enforceable, or could change. And so now, all of a sudden, we're dealing with something we never intended for this. So I'm just, I don't have an idea for you, I'm just throwing it out there as maybe we want to tighten it up a little bit, so that we're not faced with that situation.
It is a DRB review. You have to go through the DRB to get the waiver.
Right, but the point is that after the DRB approves it.
Yep.
And they go ahead and build it, and 10 years, all of a sudden, now we have a for-profit, and they're, I understand the reason, and Arianna was talking about this before, we want affordable housing in town, but if it gets bought up by, by some corporation, and turned into short-term rentals, or something else that we don't want, how do we deal with that? And I'm not sure the DRB is gonna be able to say, oh, well, we said 10 years ago that this is what it was gonna look like, and now all of a sudden, it's different. I, I just, I think we need to be thoughtful about that particular, this particular point that's being made here.
Yeah, I don't know where to go with it, I just don't quite understand it. It just seems like it's opening up a door that I'm not sure what's, what it's gonna let in. And I don't mean that in a bad way, I just mean in, in a general way.
I have a question.
I don't, I don't really remember that this much, but did this have something to do with the size of these structures? Because when we add an accessory dwelling, those are always smaller. So was this about being able to build a bigger thing on the lot, or where did this come from? I don't really remember.
This was a compromise, because originally, there was a proposal that we were floating around within the planning commission that said, hey, if you've got a big enough lot, why don't we let people put two principal structures on that lot? And the more we thought about that, the more we came to, to believe that that could ultimately have some of those unintended consequences, where everybody's running around, creating multiple principal structures on a single lot. So to try to figure out how to develop a compromise that would put some constraints on that concept, so that it didn't run away, but at the same time, allow things like that where it, you know, where it would, where it certainly could be beneficial, beneficial to the community, we sort of kind of angled it in with this nonprofit subsidized housing as a way to make it effectively not a free-for-all. So we started in a place that said, well, maybe anybody can have multiple principal structures on a lot if it meets all the requirements, and we stepped back from that, because we didn't think we were ready for that. And that's how we ended up where we are. So that's kind of how we got here, to your point. You know, we, we don't really have a, you know, a good answer for what happens if it ultimately gets, you know, sold.
I guess I'd just like more clarification on that.
Can, can that issue be addressed, is, or is it addressed in zoning? So if the lot is big enough to support two structures, it could just be split and still meet the zoning requirements for that area?
Well, yeah, but I think the, what we're, you know, and Preston will be able to speak to this better, but right now, if you have a big enough lot, and you want to have two, two structures on it, you have to subdivide it.
Uh-huh.
So this would have been a scenario that would allow...
Without the subdivision.
Not going through the subdivision process, but putting multiple principal structures on a single parcel. And we decided that was, that was, there wasn't enough oversight to just make that be the case. It was gonna be a little bit too risky, and we felt.
But they're both getting to the same...
Yeah, but this one has a constraint that, you know, unless you're doing it, you know, maybe it's more of like for an altruistic reason. I'm creating, you know, subsidized or nonprofit housing, and so if you're able to do that, don't force folks in the subdivision process. Let them do something like put another building on the same parcel, you know, because their intent is, you know, is, is centered around creating more housing for, for the community, rather than just, you know, building their, their compound or something.
I have a, can I ask a couple questions, real quick, or one? If this was not in the bylaws, and an altruistic developer came to you and said, I'm buying this large lot, I'm, would like to put in two sets of affordable housing buildings, if this is not in here, is the DRB and the zoning unable to accommodate that developer? Or, with lawyers and money, is anything possible?
I'll let you answer that one. You know, I was staring at the ceiling and thinking about this.
How did I get here?
Yeah. We're all familiar with Pleasant Brook, next to the fire station. That is more than one building on a lot, and it's 23 units, I think, or something like that. Well, that was approved as a PUD, so planned unit development. So I am kind of looking at this and saying, if you're truly uncomfortable with it, at least the first one, the one under waivers for subdivision requirements, just strike it, and we'll tell people to go through the planned unit development process. So, I'm not quite sure what wording we could put in there. You know, if we start saying, well, it's only for things that are gonna be subsidized or nonprofit for perpetuity, I don't know, then I'm almost kind of like, I say it.
And, and that was sort of the, the point of the question. And we're also, to be realistic, and reflect on our own community, I find it hard to believe that there's going to be a dozen developers ready to build apartment buildings, all up and down Main Street. I, I feel like if it's not in here, and someone, or a few people, come with those ideas that are positive for the community, we do have the mechanics in place to make, to accommodate it. Okay, thank you.
That's a lot of what, that's a lot of what we deal with, Arianna, with these sorts of rules. You know, what is the possibility of much of any of this, especially in our little town, which I say not much happens, and then Julie gets mad at me. But, you know, in reality, from my perspective, not much happens here. We're trying to solve some of these potential problems. You know, we just had an argument for campers, so if somebody has an extra lot next to their house that's big, according to what we just talked about, they could park a camper there, and have that there, but if it's big enough to build another structure that might resemble their other structure, now you're saying, well, let's not do that.
No, we're actually saying they need to go through the design review board.
Well, we don't have one of those, but there are some, there are some, there are some, so, yeah, so I guess, I guess, to, if, hopefully, I'm being helpful here. I think that in, if you have a lot, whatever the rules are now, you could have one house on that lot. That lot, with the new lot sizes that we're coming up with, that might be subdividable, so someone could subdivide that and put something else on there. So basically, what we're saying, if you have a lot that's big enough to add another structure, you want to keep that yourself and own it, and then do something philanthropic oriented, or get help from the housing trust, you could have another structure. More than likely, it's gonna look like the one that's there, and that's probably a better option than the camper thing. And I, I'm also, the, the whole parcel one would have to be sold, Lee, not just the additional one, because it would have to be subdivided in order to have that sold, so the whole parcel would be sold. And at that point, what someone did with it, you know, I, I think that after the initial good cause is created, and maybe there has to be a timeline in there, so I think, I think like, like, for instance, we had people come to speak to us, they're offering $50,000 from the state to turn your garage into what they used to call an in-law apartment.
Yeah.
You have to do that for a period of five years, at a certain amount of rent, in order to have that work when it's yours. So it'd be, it'd be one of those types of things.
So I think I'm with Arianna on this one, as well. Take, just take it out.
Just take it out.
If, if we don't need it.
What is lost if we remove it? What is lost if we don't do it?
It's just a different way of getting to the same...
Yeah, I don't think, yeah, I don't think that anything is lost necessarily, but...
It was another way of slicing the apple, but no, you're right. I think, I think you, I think I've talked myself into the fact that the PUD tool is sufficient.
Yeah, I think the only thing, in our discussions about that, going through the PUD process, it's a higher barrier of entry. So we were trying to make things easier, that doesn't make things easier.
Understood, understood.
So that's probably the spirit, but it's doable. It's just doable with a higher level of rigor and effort for whoever's gonna take it.
And I, I will say that this, this Better Places document that we talk about, that the state issued, one of their suggestions was to do away with the requirement that there be only one principal structure per lot. So it's not a completely radical idea, but it's just if, you know, our planning commission wasn't comfortable with it, and it sounds like you're not comfortable with it, so there it is.
Well, the thing is, on, on the financial end, having developed a lot of work for developers who have developed a lot of things, there is many things that are done with HUD founding, HUD funding, because it's so much cheaper. And, but there's always, at the end of 10 years, you know, that's the end of it, and you're gonna turn it into a high end, that's how you finance it in the first place. But you can still do that with a PUD. You know, there's, there's no tool, I think, that you're gonna get to stop that, you know, it's the, it's the cheap money that gets the construction started.
Yeah, I, I'm not saying I know what the answer is.
Yeah.
The, what we risk is keeping a developer away, ultimately.
Yes.
What we risk is, is eliminating one opportunity for housing development, which is our priority.
The other thing that the folks from the nonprofits said was, their biggest deterrent in getting involved in things is the risk of going down the road, and then getting turned away by the DRB, and by neighbors complaining, and so forth and so on, because they've got so much money invested.
Right.
They can't afford to risk that money, so then they don't even start. And that was part of our theory on this, if we create this opportunity, so within this respect, we have this opportunity for them, then they're not risking getting turned away by the neighbors and DRB, because this is approved, then we have more chance for this affordable housing to happen. So you, you know, you guys are kind of stepping in the way of what you're trying to do, which you were kind of...
Which is what I just said, yeah.
Very adamant about with the campers.
Yeah.
That you don't want in a, in a real brick-and-mortar structure, that has water and sewer, and electricity, and everything there.
That's not what I said. I said, there are two paths, no, there are two paths to that result. I do want multi-unit affordable housing in Chester, in multiple buildings, on a single lot. That's exactly what I think should happen. But I think there's too much room for abuse, if it's simply that now two structures can be on a lot. I believe that there's enough zoning regulation, that if this were to be in here and go forward, it could be manageable, but I think it's gonna be up for a lot of interpretation. So if it's not in here, and we still have a path forward to the same end result, I think that's great. I genuinely look to you guys to tell us if having this will increase the likelihood that we will have this housing, or if removing it will decrease that. And, and I know that's a, not a question you can answer, but I would be interested in Preston's opinion and Hugh's opinion.
I guess I'm at the opinion that I don't think there's too much harm in removing it, because we do have the PUD process.
Yeah, I, I probably would agree. I mean, I guess, what I will say, just in conclusion, and I think we can move on, when we were having this discussion, one of the ways we talked about it was not a big developer coming in. It was, for example, Kathy, who has enough land, and already has a building, but wants to do something more, you know, to, to create an environment for more housing, because she has the space, and she, you know, loves Chester. So it was, you know, that was kind of the genesis of the discussion, so, yes, could Kathy do it? Yes, she would just have to go through the PUD, PUD process. So when we were talking about it, we weren't really thinking about it with, oh, we're, we're trying to make it easy for the big developer to come in.
Right.
We were trying to make it easy for, opportunistically, for somebody that had a situation where it could be done. And so I think that's probably why I got in there, but, but...
And to be clear, anecdotally, I agree with everything...
Yeah.
...that you guys are, I agree with all the scenarios you've put forward with it.
Yeah.
I just fear the scenarios that have not been addressed, that's all.
Yep.
And it, and the bottom line is, there still is a process to accomplish what you want to do.
Yeah, absolutely, yes.
It's not spelled out in that paragraph, but there is still a way to get to the same end.
Okay.
I, I like to call it a risk-benefit analysis, you know, the, the tighter your rules are, you have less risk, but less benefit, and it's just, you just had to figure it out. Yep.
And I guess, for the record, at this moment, I don't feel adamantly one way or the other. I'm still listening to you guys on this particular... I'm still listening to you guys on this particular thing.
I don't want to go on and on, but somebody has to own that.
Somebody has to own that initial parcel first, or the initial property first, in order to build the second one. So with respect to a developer trying to take advantage of this for some evil gain, they would have to buy the first house first with that lot and then make the investment. So I'd like to kind of, you know...
Thank you for that. I was not, I wasn't clear on that, so thank you.
Yeah.
Is that true, that this would only apply to somebody who already owns a?
Yes, you have to own the initial house with a lot big enough next to it. So like, if you, if you own your house and you have your lot big enough next to it, then you build on that lot.
Can I ask Preston real quick?
That's what it is, right?
I hate to disagree, but I don't think it says that. I mean, I just think it...
Well, who owns the lot next to Kathy, then? That was, that was the example, right? You have to own the lot.
Well, Kathy would own the lot, but a developer would come in and, you know, pay her...
There's nothing to say a developer can't buy an empty lot and put two buildings on it based on this.
Because you have to own the lot. If it's yours, if it's your house, if it's, if it's your second dwelling on your land, you'd have to subdivide to give it to somebody else. So a developer would have to create a contract with Kathy that in order to, in order to do that.
Well, let's, let's talk about a different property, and I'm always a little concerned about properties, but we all know the Adams Funeral Home burned.
Yes.
The owner has said he would be open to developing that for affordable housing. So then you have to say, oh, how would our rules allow that? What would our rules not allow? And that property, it might make more sense to have more than one structure on it without subdividing it. You could get more bang for your buck, that's all.
Right. Well, the same thing is, if you go through a PDU, you can actually increase the density by 50%.
Yeah. So I think at the end...
So I, I think, you know, at the interest of not making this go on forever, I think the PDU is a tool that will probably get us there and not be that much harder.
So I think this is a conversation you guys need to have, because we can't add any, I mean, we brought up a question, you guys need to answer it, I think.
We're going to have to decide tonight whether we pass this or not pass it with that paragraph in there.
I think, I think if you're making a substantial change, you're not approving any of it.
Well, I know, but I think we're going to send it back with that in mind, saying that we either want that paragraph in there, or we don't want that paragraph in there.
I don't think that you could make these changes and call them minor.
Oh, no, I'm not saying that.
However, however, it does seem to me, looking at the statute, that you have two routes. One is to send it back to the planning commission, say, you figure this out. The other is to say, we're going to bring it back for a second hearing, and we'll figure it out. So, yeah. And your figuring it out might be just cross it out.
And either way, Preston, when you read this, it does have to go back to the planning commission, because the planning commission has to amend your report.
Well, that's what I...
All of that, and so it's got to go back to the planning commission, one way or the other.
Yeah, okay. That's kind of what I remembered, yeah.
Okay, so we can end on an easy one. See? See how this works?
Are you sure of it?
The last one's a softball. It's just, you know, changing the size for the accessory dwelling unit from 900 to 1,000 square feet. Again, just to, and I think Preston basically, again, did some research around ADUs, and that number came up a lot, and it seemed like, you know, ADUs are a good thing, we like ADUs, so, you know, why are we being, you know, strict about, you know, 900 square feet? So we wanted to see what we could do to make that better, and your research found...
Well, the, when the ADU statute was first passed by the state, they were being fairly cautious, and they limited them to 900 feet. They've since amended the statute and don't limit them. And our planning commission said, boy, 900 seems a little small. And so I did. I checked around other towns, and some went as high as like 12 or 15, but most settled on 1,000. So there we are.
Any advantage in increasing it even more? Like you said, I mean, it's kind of rolled into everything else.
Well, the only thing is that, it's kind of like, Arnie, when you were saying before, you could have a house and two ADUs on one lot, and you're kind of like, gee, three families. Well, keeping your ADU smaller kind of prevents having three primary houses on a lot. It kind of, you have one primary house and two small houses. That's kind of what it does.
Hey, any more?
The original, you know, now I'm running the clock out, but the original ADU statute said one bedroom or a studio, and it was supposed to be for affordable housing. Well, how many single parents have kids and they want to be in one bedroom together? So the state kind of said, no, 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 you know, so they changed that. And we changed it.
Yeah, and just to finish that one up, the way we talked about it in the planning commission, from a sizing point of view, is, you know, you really don't want an ADU to have absolutely no limits, because what you will end up with is somebody will have a small house, and they'll build a mansion and call it their ADU, and then everything starts to get out of whack with respect to, you know, what you're trying to, what you were trying to achieve initially. So we do believe you should have some kind of boundaries on ADUs, and we just wanted to make them a little bigger. I think that's...
Well, we did, we did have a definition for primitive camp. I just, zoning administrators have been proving camps in Chester forever, and there's never been a definition, so that's just the state definition. We did, you know, we talked about a degree of non-conformity is kind of a hard concept. For some reason, in the definitions, it had extent of non-conformity, which was, I don't know, you could read it all you want, I don't even know what it says, so I said, let's get rid of that.
So if a camp or a primitive camp exists now, that doesn't meet this criteria, so what is it then?
Well, what it's supposed to be with a primitive camp, this is the state's definition. And this is something that doesn't have a septic system, it has an outhouse. So you're not supposed to occupy more than 60 days out of the year.
That means overnight?
Overnight, yes. No more than three consecutive weeks per year, and no more than 60 days per year. And occupied means live there, overnight. Yep. And so...
No, my question was, if a primitive camp has more than what this says, but it still doesn't have a septic system, and doesn't have, then it still follows the rest of the rules. So what is it then?
It's in violation.
Arnie's house on the lot?
Okay. Got it.
We're supposed to be clarifying things here.
So we've got leases...
If, if you have a camp that doesn't meet this definition, you're actually in violation of state water quality rules. Now, now that we're clarifying it, it means you're also in violation of the town's rules. And it is possible, if you say, gee, we don't want to be in that business, that you could take that out. I thought it made sense that when we approve a camp, it would be consistent with state water quality rules.
You can't have an outhouse anymore?
Not and live there.
Oh, and leave there all the time?
Yeah. So yes, you can have an outhouse if you don't live there more than 60 days out of the year. That's the state rule.
I said two nights and not...
But I'm not, I'm not outside your camp with a clipboard counting how many nights you're there.
I might have to recuse myself.
I still have to say my bit about the state sticking their nose in places where they really shouldn't.
Yeah.
That's true, in so many places, in so many ways.
Yeah.
They know better than we do as far as what this town is, and where it should be, and where we should be going.
The very last thing is the definition of short-term rental, which is, in fact, the state definition. Why our town attorney, Jim Carroll, wants that in there is there is a Supreme Court definite, Supreme Court decision that says, unless your zoning bylaw says otherwise, you're presumed to have the right to have a short-term rental. So he said, well, even though you've got an ordinance, he said, because the Supreme Court said that, you better define it in your bylaw.
So that's just belts and suspenders?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that the end?
So now you get to decide, when you get to that agenda item, what you want to do with this mess. But anyway.
I just, I don't want to drag this on, but I just want to say that I feel, and I hope that I'm speaking for the whole planning board here, that we feel Preston is invaluable, and we're so glad to have him. His, the amount of resource that he brings and the way he thinks before he speaks, other than the way I do things, is really helpful for the board, and it's great having him as a chair, too. He brings some corporate panache, is that a word? Something that keeps us going in the right direction and having structure. So it's, I feel very lucky to be working with these, with all of our, all of our crew. So there you go.
Agreed. Thank you, guys, for all your work, ladies and gentlemen.
So basically, we had just those three different areas, that 19 about the campers, the little addition to the road design for the, talking to the town highway guy and see how that's going to work out, and take a look about the paragraph about the subsidized and non-subsidized construction on there, I think.
Well, I, I think the hot water item has need, because the way that, when you say solar, it doesn't say solar electric.
I'm sorry, what was that again?
So if you, when we were talking about solar panels, you can have hot water panels. They would not have a certificate of public good. So you would have to get a permit for those, even if they were on the roof.
Are you recommending that that be addressed before we come back?
We're going to go back, yeah, I would address that.
Yeah, that's a good point, Peter.
I'm not sure which...
So under the, under the statement where you say that an exempt solar ray, as long as it has a certificate of public good or it's net metered, it's exempt, you don't need a permit. Peter's point is that there are some solar equipment for making hot water directly that would never require either net metering or CPG, because it doesn't affect the public utilities.
Right.
And so the question is, would you still need a permit if you were strictly roof mounting that, like a roof-mounted electric system? Or would it only need a permit if it were a ground-mounted system?
Oh, so ground versus, ground versus roof for...
And I was just going to recommend that that's how you guys address it, is if it doesn't change the footprint, then it's probably okay without a permit.
You know, without having it stated clearly in the bylaw, I would probably say roof mount doesn't need a permit, but, but you're, of course, that's just me, and you're, you want to write something down. Yeah.
All right. So the three items, and actually four at this point, just to take a look at them and see what, what you can come up with.
So you're basically sending them back to the planning commission?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
So you're sending it back to the planning commission for the planning commission to work through the details?
Yes.
With new language.
That's, that's what I would recommend.
Yeah. I, you've got a lot more experience and more knowledge about all of what's going on right now.
You want to write this yourself?
No, we'll just pick it apart.
Thanks.
Sorry. I, I think it's, it's good to have this discussion out here, because it not only helps us as a board, but it helps the town to hear what's going on and to delve into it a little more as we go along, and things pop up that I didn't think were going to pop, or that I wasn't aware of, and it works to the, helping everyone, I think, just to get the word out there and to make sure we all understand what's happening. So at this point, I would close this public hearing and thank everybody that's here for it and your time that you put into it, and hopefully these changes, in a small part, shouldn't be, shouldn't be too bad.
Yeah, this will be no problem. We're good.
Thank you, gentlemen and ladies. Approve our minutes from April 19th, 2023.
So I'll make a motion to approve the April 19th, 2023 select board meeting minutes.
Second?
Lee's the motion, and Ariana's the second. Any changes, corrections, omissions, errors, anything on the minutes?
I have none.
Anybody?
No.
None.
All those in favor of approving the minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The minutes are all set.
Rest in peace.
Citizens' comments. Anyone here that would like to address the board regarding something that is not on the agenda, now would be the time for citizens' comments. Are there any citizens' comments? Nobody has their hand up? I think that's our hand up with Joey Slaughter.
Yes, that's ours. Yep.
Yeah. Old business. Julie, can you take us through our old business list?
I can. So just a few things. I met with the planning commission on Monday to just briefly start a conversation and let them know my thoughts around the housing commission, something I'll be presenting to you guys at the next select board meeting. But I wanted to talk to the planning commission first, gain any feedback from them, because this is, this is a group that would be working very closely with the planning commission on development of housing for the town. So there'll be more coming to you. You guys will formally approve that or not approve that, whatever, at your next meeting. An announcement, the Pocket Park, Ms. Scott Wonderly submitted, that won an award for that. Chester won a Public Place, a Public Places Award, the Remar Architecture something, something, Public Places Award, which was pretty cool.
So did we get a free set of chess pieces?
Scott might have.
It had a beautiful set of chess pieces, and they're gone.
I thought they were at the pie shop.
We knew. You, you can go to the pie shop and borrow their chess set and then return it. There was a set that Scott made. We knew they'd end up in the river. They did.
Yeah.
And then I just wanted to, because there was, I don't want to be picky about it, but because there was a comment made at the last select board meeting that there was nothing that came from the master plan, and this goes out over Sapa, it's really important to me that people understand the amount of stuff that did come from the master plan. The very first thing being the zoning audit and the actual bylaw rewrite that's taking place now was an impetus of the master plan. That was the whole basis of it. The Pocket Park, of course, our wayfinding plan was created. We are out to bid now on the construction of the signs. That wayfinding plan will be implemented this summer with those signs going up. The design of the signage. The Brookside Bridge and Hiking Trail was all part of the master plan. That came from that. The scoping study for the Church Street sidewalk, that scoping study came from that. The whole Depot Street sidewalk project was a million-dollar grant the town got, dealing with rail as far as right-of-way, but that, it all came from the master plan, and the expanded, the charging stations and the expanded parking on Cobley, we just were awarded a grant for that, that also came from the master plan. So out of 20-something initiatives, this addressed all but about five of them. So that actually was a document that we were very effective, and the town has been referenced whenever ACCD does their presentations on the Better Places, Better Connections Grant Chester is used as the model of what to do. So it's just important to me, it was one of my passionate projects, and we, we did a lot of work on that, and I think it's important that the citizens know that it was not just a pocket park.
And it's still being used as we go forward.
And it is still being used as we go forward. It is my impetus to getting, it's my support for many grants that we are awarded. And actually, we'll be looking probably next year to do our five-year update to that master plan. So, anyway, I'll move on now, but I wanted to get that out there. Just talked to Deb Daniels, the cemetery survey, she'll be starting that Brookside Cemetery, not Brookside, Pleasant View Cemetery expansion. We're down to only 10 lots available, so we're needing new survey, new survey done. Deb will be starting that in June. The money for that is coming, came to us from the trustee of public funds. That's one of the $5,000 that we got from them. I can't read my, oh. There is a grant opening up, the bike ped grant is opening up. This is the same program we used to get the scoping study for Church Street. I would like to do a formal scoping study of a potential sidewalk from Jiffy Mart down to the high school. This is something that's been discussed for a long time. We had a kind of very informal scoping study done back probably 15 years ago. This would be a formal one, does a survey, does right-of-way layout, all of that. So I am hoping to apply for that. That application is due June 9th. And then... And then, I have, the festival committee is working on, and has been talking to me about helping to fund some electricity on the green, on the Academy Building side of the green. So, I, I met with them today with Steve Mancuso and Steve, our facilities director, and a couple members of the festival committee to look at some ideas of how this could work, what we are, are considering is having some, along the stone wall, there would be on each, there's two sections divided by the Hearst House and the tomb. Having two, they would be low-to-the-ground bollards that would have, two on each section of stone wall, that would have a 50-amp service and then a few 120s. So for the food trucks, when they're lined up there, they would be able to have power, music series would have power. So the power would be there, it would also go around, and then in front of the Academy Building where the ramp is, there's kind of a little corner there. There would also be a bollard hidden there that would supply power for the music series and for, again, another food truck, the ice cream truck for the festival. Could be used by a lot of people. Festival committee is looking at the, at the monies that they have to contribute, potentially could be 100% of the cost of the contribution they're looking to make since it's used primarily by them. So I will update you with more, but I think it would be a great benefit to the green for any kind of festivals or future events that we want to have. It's, it's kind of long overdue. We run, we run extension cords all over the place from the information booth and from the Academy Building, and the power at the Academy Building really doesn't support what's needed. So anyways, this is a project that we're working on. Yeah.
Are you going to upgrade the service to the Academy Building when you do that?
When we do the work at the Academy Building, we will.
Yeah.
We're, we're not going to yet because there's a big project coming with the Academy Building soon, and I think when we do that project is when we'll update the power to that building because it does need to be done.
Right.
It's just basic, just basic power right now. And one of the things we're talking about is since we're going to have to run conduit for the power to that corner of the ramp, there is a pole, if you really look closely, there is a pole on the corner that takes the power from that pole through the trees to the Academy Building. Since we're going to be running conduit anyway to run to this little bollard with power, we're going to also run the three-inch so that when we upgrade the power, we will bury it and that pole will go away. So, so from that pole to the Academy Building will be buried power.
So are you having a, a separate service for, for this? So you're getting the, the base power from the Academy Building?
The base power is actually going to come from the information booth.
Oh, the information booth.
We're going to update, we're going to.
So, uh, no, so you're not going to put in another meter?
No, no. We're going to upgrade the power, what I was told today. We're going to upgrade the power to the information booth because that's what makes sense right now.
Yep.
And then that's central to where the power will disperse from. That make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Think it would be a great addition to the green. Again, we will hide things so there's nothing glaring. We don't want to ruin the aesthetics of that area. And that's it.
I mean, that comes back to the ideas that we talked about as far as the Academy Building is getting the group together to plant, law, have long-term plans for the Academy Building in general.
That's coming, yeah.
But these things burying the conduit are probably just smart things to do at this time anyways because that would be part of it in the future, no matter, no matter what you did with the building, you know, having it buried in the conduit in place, it would help.
Yeah.
But, in the future, the discussion about the Academy Building, the property there and everything that, that's encompassed there is going to be an interesting discussion to have.
Yeah. I'm gathering groups of people to, to form that committee to start working on revamping the Academy Building.
Did the parking problem get squared away with the neighbors there at the Academy Building?
There was a conversation with the owner. The way it was left in writing is that we will fix it this year. This is the only year that we will fix it. Future years, there will be a bill. And what was relayed back to me was those tenants will likely not be there.
Can you just explain what happened because I'm in the dark right now?
Oh, okay. So, the, the property next door to the Academy Building has a tenant that was living in the back. They, when they plowed, normally what has happened in the past is the town plows in and the, the person parks their car right there on the left by the fence, or over by the cemetery shed. What they did is they plowed all the way out around, and so when everything started to thaw, that was completely dug up and turned into a mud pit, that whole section of the field. So, the Highway Department and my facilities director had a conversation with the tenants that was not so pleasant. So I went to the property owner. We had a very pleasant conversation. And I, I let her know that we will fix it this year because it is not such a big deal for us to braid that out into seed, but that we would not be doing this again. There will be issues if, if this happens in the future. She relayed some concerns that she's been having anyway, so we're not anticipating there will be a problem going forward.
Good news.
Okay.
So if I could jump in, Julie, do you want me to stay for the update on the Julian quarry or?
Oh, that, that's up to the board. Do you want Justin to come into executive session for an update on the quarry?
If you don't mind.
Okay, I'll stick around.
That's it for me for old business.
Anybody else on the, on the board? Anything on old business? I guess number five, we can just skip over.
Okay.
And number seven, quarter one financial update, our first quarter of the year.
I guess I missed it.
Julie, can you help us out with this one?
I can. There's not a whole, you know, quarter one, not a whole lot, you know, exciting going on, which is good. If we have exciting things in quarter one, we have a problem. Nothing of concern, really, at the end of the day, you know, we are at roughly a quarter percent. Some things are a little high, some things are low, that's what happens. Sometime of our one-time expenses are paid in the first quarter. Things do look wonky. For those who aren't familiar, newer board members who maybe aren't familiar, we don't bill our taxes until July. Right. So we are, by the time they're paid, we're nine months in arrears. So, financial statements are going to look really wonky until we get to third quarter. But, you know, nothing, nothing alarming at this point.
Well, when you look at a, a lot of the numbers and stuff and you look at the percentage of the budget used, that, that's pretty much staying where it should be in the twenties.
Absolutely.
Low twenties, higher twenties, which is a quarter of the year and a quarter of the expenses.
Yep.
That's a pretty good indication of how things are rolling along.
Yeah. Nothing real, nothing real shocking. When we do have items that seem like, ugh, okay, this budget line is starting to get a little tight, we look at other areas where we say, okay, maybe I don't need to do this or that, just to keep things in line. But we are following the budget pretty closely this year, just wanting to not end in a deficit. So we are watching lines pretty, pretty closely.
So, just because you're, you got to help me out, the ambulance has got a bunch of things that are, the sal, salaries are high. Can you tell me what's going on there?
So, some of the ambulance stuff is going to change now. So we have, we had an, we had a one-month overlap, well, about a month and a half overlap between ambulance chiefs.
Yep.
So that's some of that. That's also why their health insurance line looks a little funky. When we did the budget, we, we, when we first did the budget, we thought we had one person. Then right at the very end, that person gave us our notice, so we changed the health insurance plan, but we still had a month of her. So that didn't really necessarily get budgeted appropriately. So at the end of the day, the health insurance line is going to be a little over. Salary, there's some interesting things going on with ambulance, and, and I'll be coming to you guys with a proposal on this, probably in the next month or two. Call volume is really high, but what we will see is that salary line will be offset in the revenue line for ambulance because the more calls, obviously, the more billing. The other thing that's going to change is your billing is going to show higher because of the salary being higher, because of the new rates that you guys adopted in February. Those new rates are in effect now. So it's going to offset, Peter, to, to make it long story short. But one of the things that we're finding, because of the call volume that we're experiencing, financially, it will likely make sense to hire a second full-time person for ambulance. Now, what I'm working on creating is what is that person doing while they're waiting for an ambulance call? And that's where we're working and talking about overlap. Because if I have that second full-time person, certified person, I have full-time coverage seven days out of the week. Whereas right now, we pay extra for people to come in on the weekends to cover when the full-time person isn't there. So I, number one, it gives me overlap, number two, it gives me seven days of coverage. Then you have, then you have your, your volunteer part-timers that just help the full-time person that's on duty. So, what I'm working on right now is really fine-tuning those numbers to say, okay, if I had a second full-time person, right now it's looking like that's only going to cost me another maybe $10,000 above what I've already budgeted. So, I just want to make sure those numbers are really accurate before I really formally present this to you guys. And, again, we're talking about, you know, Michael Ranzio's position, he's now deputy chief, but, you know, he was, he was hired in a position that we created to be a part-time public safety officer. He wasn't just for one department, he's for all three. So he's a part-time police officer and an EMT. Now he's our full-time deputy chief, but he is also a part-time police officer. So when Mike doesn't have a whole lot going on, he grabs a cruiser and he goes run directed patrol, or runs radar. And it's, it just gives great crossover. We're looking at how we can do that also between ambulance and fire. Where it could be, what is some stuff that we would really like to have accomplished in fire, maybe pre-planning, maybe some of these other things, and how could this full-time person be a bridge between those two departments? So, we just, we're really trying to create an innovative position, but that's affordable to the town and is getting us all the coverage that we need at the most affordable price. So I'm not, now that I've told you everything, I'm not really ready to present it to you. But, but it's important for you to know, like, these discussions are happening, and then we're also around that same topic, talking about the mental health issues that are going on, and Chester doesn't really need a full social worker embedded, we don't have enough calls for that level. But some of our ambulance calls that are just, we have some people in town that we go to daily, and every town faces this. It's, it's that they need somebody to talk to. So we take them, they want to be transit, we don't have a choice, we have to transport, and, you know, and we're not getting paid for that. It's a call that we're likely not going to get paid for, but it monopolizes time. And so, again, this is a big part of the mental health issue that, it's not just police, it's ambulance that's facing it, it's fire that's facing it. And so, what is a way that we could get what they call a behavioral, behavioral liaison, that's what they call them, to work for Chester? What could the services be that they provide? And we're working with HCRS, and the citizen advisory panel is going to work on this, this is going to be one of the tasks that they're going to take on to research because it's very involved, very detailed. Can we share with another town? Like, what does this look like? Because just getting those services from HCRS doesn't, it just doesn't work. It's, it's a broken system, they will tell you that themselves. But we are talking about, maybe it's a position, HCRS has funding, they may be willing to, to, you know, pay for 20 hours' worth of work for a person that's dedicated to Chester. So lots of conversations.
So are we required to roll a truck every time somebody calls?
Yes.
So, there's not an option for somebody calls every day and we send somebody over, not in the truck?
So you have to have a program set up for that, and that has to be done through. So every ambulance service has a director, medical director from the local hospital has to be over them. And so in order to not respond with, with the truck, you have to have a program in place. And part of that program is you have to have somebody trained as a behavioral, some level, whatever level the town wants to adopt. Because it's got to be somebody who can assess, okay, they don't need, they don't have a medical need, their need is mental. Well, my EMTs are not qualified to determine if your issue is mental.
So we don't get those calls anyway, right? Because it goes to dispatch?
They go to dispatch, and then dispatch is required to call us. Yep. If they're calling 911, we don't have a choice.
So whenever dispatch calls us, we got to roll the truck?
We do. We do. And so, like I said, there are programs out there. There are programs out there that would be great for Chester, but they require a paramedic. Adding a paramedic to our staff is a whole nother layer that we really don't want to go to. The liability is enormous, the outfitting of a paramedic is enormous. But there are ways that we're looking into, again, to be creative and think outside the box of how we can take that program, tailor it down to our level, and what is that, what is that certification of that mental health worker that's needed? I mean, I don't think it's a clinical psychologist, I think, and it may not even be a social worker. There, there are other layers there that may work for us, but it's all got to be filtered through the hospital, it's got to be approved by HCRS, there's a, there's a lot to it, but I think there's a lot of benefit that could come to Chester if we had this person. So, we're just kind of working through that. It's a big discussion.
Yeah.
But an important one.
What's, what's driving the uptick in calls? Aging population or?
I think it's aging population, it's mental health. We also have more people living here year-round than we have in the past. I mean, we had 508 calls last year, which was already up 100 from the year before. And if calls continue the way they have been the first quarter, we're going to be up probably another 120 calls in 2023. Yeah. So, I mean, our emergency services department, and it's great for Chester residents, but it's really, it's really turning towards something that's a little different than what we've ever had. You know, we've always had these small volunteer departments, you know, partially paid. It, it really isn't that anymore. It, it's really starting to shift. Our services are used a lot by our residents and by the town of Andover, we cover Andover as well, and they're, they're paying their share. We have some conversations that may be happening with Bell's Falls where there's some kind of a shared system there. Not really sure what that's going to be about, but they're having issues. And Chester's really is set up. I mean, people are kind of using what we're doing as a model, so people are starting to come to us, and we're like, whoa, we can't be a hub, like, we can't serve all these surrounding towns, that's just a whole nother thing. But, yeah. It's just a whole lot, like, there it is, you know, it's just a ton.
Okay, so, let's, I just.
Got another question, Peter?
Yeah, I do. Yeah, I'll make it easier. There's the insurance for the sewer and water department is both, I mean, even if you're paying two quarters, you know, one is 140.
Pete, where are you?
Are you on the general fund or water or sewer?
Water and sewer. Water and sewer line 0312-33-0 is the water. And, by the way, this is the 23 budget for the sewer department.
Yeah?
Yeah. Well, yeah, it's 22 at the top.
Mine doesn't say 22?
No.
Oh, she, she just didn't change the call. Yeah.
Yep. Okay, so, but both of those insurances, one's running 143 and the other's running 82% and you're, and that's?
For health insurance?
No, way down. The PACIF insurance.
Oh, 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 the property casualty insurance.
Yeah, property casualty.
Yep, okay.
It's first and second, but it's still 143.
It's first and second quarter.
Yeah, but 143% is your pass for fourth quarter.
Yeah, I'll have her look, something may not be allocated right. I'll have still look at it. I'll have still look at it, Peter.
Okay. Now, the one, the one other question that I have, and maybe because it's in the budget, but police are going to generate $40,000 of other services. I couldn't, I, looking through last year's revenue, we never even, you know, chemo and the rest of these are pulled out, where is that coming? What are the other services that they're going to be able to bill for?
So we do detail.
Right.
So when we have detail, that all flows through us.
Yep.
But we have a surplus charge that we charge.
Yep.
That the company pays us for the use of our officers.
That, oh, chemo. That, oh, chemo, that's right.
So not just oh chemo, there's other detail. They're doing paving on 103, if they're doing paving on Route 11.
Yep.
They contract with our officers.
All right.
Um, and so that line, if you, if you do look back through other budgets, don't look at the first quarter, look at the full year.
Yep.
Uh, in previous years, that line is usually pretty high, but it's offset in expense.
Yep.
That's where it's offset.
Yep.
So if there's not the expense, there won't be the revenue. If there's the expense, there will be the revenue. Yep. Yep. And that doesn't usually hit Peter until summer.
Right.
Yep. Anybody else have any other questions on any of the budgets?
Oh, the other thing on water sewer, I will just tell you, is that, um, the salary line will probably end, will end up going over. We have decided we are filling the fourth position. Um, we had the four, the four positions for water sewer. Um, and then Chris left and for the winter, we didn't feel we needed to fill it. Uh, but now that summer is coming, things are very much behind and Jeff has given, um, his retirement date of 2025. So we are, um, filling that fourth position where we've advertised for it. Um, it's, it's desperately needed at this point because we've got the lead line inventory, we've got the wastewater asset management inventory going and, um, we're starting to make that, uh, transition in Jeff leaving, um, and retiring and, and getting everybody else up to speed to run the department. Um, so we, we are, do have an add out there for that, for that position.
Is that going to be strictly the water department or water and sewer?
Nope, all, they're all water and sewer trained. Correct. Yep. Yep. Chances are who we get will be a certified wastewater operator and then we have to put them through the water test.
Yep.
That's usually what happens. Um, and Wayne Wickens just passed his water, uh, which is great. So we now have, we now have three certified water operators.
We're cross-training everybody.
We're cross-training everybody. A small town, you have to.
It's amazing.
You just have to.
It's amazing how we're adapting to it.
You have to.
We're wearing about six different hats on everybody in town.
Yep.
Any other questions? Next item is our annual financial plan and certification for V-Trans. I guess this is just a document stating that we spend, uh, more money than we're, than we're, what, we spend at least as much money as we're supposed to.
Right.
On the miles. We're not even close. We spend like way more money.
Oh, my word. We have 97 miles of dirt road.
And why did they even ask questions like that?
I know because it's V-Trans.
Don't, don't look at the Merck stuff. It'll frighten you.
Yeah. They need to put roads under coverage stuff, yeah, oh, yeah. There's two, you've got the highway access plan and you've got the certification.
Do we need a motion for this or no?
No, just sign.
Just signature.
Just signature.
Detroit Municipal Roads with a whole list of stuff. It includes private roads.
It says we spend at least 300 per mile and I think we spend more like, uh, five, 10 grand per mile or something.
That's a lot.
So the 300 is an easy number to hit, I guess.
I'm so tired, I can't even sign my name right. Way past my bit.
Yes.
And it's these two's fault because before they got on the board, we were done like at seven o'clock. Remember, you remember your first meeting here, Arianna? And the second?
Yeah, and the third.
Those cannabis commission meetings were 30 to 45 minutes.
I know, that's right, yeah. I told my wife I'd be home at eight.
It's not the first time you ever told her a non-truth.
Oh, it was true when I, it was true when I told her, I said, I think I'll be home at eight, which is what I thought, but.
Uh, country girl diner entertainment permit. That's right. Computer ones, we need more.
That's right. These ones you don't.
Just signatures.
So, safe to assume that the town doesn't use the Academy Building and the general department? Fire station? Who, who thinks about that?
Couple of cemetery deeds.
It's because you're two old men, that's why you're sitting there thinking that.
Oh, I laughed.
Thank you.
His water test, his water certification. We call him Water Wayne because we have two wings, we have Water Wayne and Dirt Wayne. Yep.
We're testing the water on Popple Dungeon this year. Somewhere up there. Did you volunteer for it?
No.
He's looking for volunteers.
Can you test the water on the Great Brook? Of Route 10?
Said about three miles up.
Thank you.
Usually they don't bother with that area because waters, uh, when they tested it where it comes into town, it's always been clear, it's always been nice. Great Brook, I know.
What is it, what is it, the conservation committee? Take that out of the project.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's, the decision is through them. I think it comes from the state on where they are, the organization that they do it for. I mean, that wouldn't be a bad idea though. What do they do? Water testing for E. coli and phosphorus and all that kind of stuff. So we know what we're sending down to Connecticut and Long Island, so.
Guess there's be a couple of places I wouldn't test.
Uh, future agenda items, new business.
Uh, let's put the road standards on there.
Yep.
Because that will be entertaining. And the other thing that we want to look at is the-
Does that will be what?
Entertaining.
Entertaining.
Yep. Uh, the other thing that I'd like you to start thinking about is I was looking at the, the Merck stuff and talking to Otis at regional planning and we are gonna, in the next couple of years, we're going to be responsible for fixing class four roads. We would not be responsible for fixing class four roads if we turn them into trails.
Mm-hmm.
So we ought to be thinking about that because, you know, he was saying that, you know, a foot of scouring, we're going to have to go fix on a class four road and that would be a lot of horrendous amount of money.
Well, and I can, I mean, I can also have Kirby come in and talk about the work that the town is doing on the municipal roads general permit. So for those of you who may not know, it has to do with hydrologically connected.
It's a scary list.
It's hydrologically connected, uh, segments of road that are mapped by V-Trans. Chester has like per capita the largest number in the state. Um, because we have the largest miles of dirt road in the state per capita and the largest number of bridges and the largest number of culverts.
And they're all connected to the water.
And they're all connected to the water.
Is there a report?
Yes.
Around all this?
Yes.
Can I get access to that report?
There is.
Yep, you can access it online.
And then I won't ask questions right now?
Yep.
Yeah, you will, but, but let me have you do that with a report from Kirby because there are plans in place of how we're addressing things. If you just look at that on your own, you're going to be like, what?
Yeah.
Um, you need to hear from Kirby on the work that is done, the work that is being done. They're a little delayed in updating their map on the work that has been completed. So, um, there's a whole process. So why don't I have Kirby come to a meeting and talk about this?
But there's also the fact that that doesn't cover the real streams. That doesn't cover, if there is a stream crossing, this doesn't cover it, that all comes under natural resources and it's a whole nother deal.
This is all thanks to the federal legislation from the Clean Water Act.
Yes.
Yeah.
So our government, that worked.
Our government worked. Um, now, there was a transportation meeting, uh, Arnie was there, they talked about $30,000 in, in money from, it's coming from Division Two that they'll do the work. Kirby was at my house for a different reason, I didn't track him down.
I told him to talk to you about it.
Oh, well, and what, what, uh, the idea that I put forth to Kirby is we don't, the secondary white line striping.
Mm-hmm.
You know, this money is for hazards, you know, there would be signs and striping and secondary road stripe, uh, the white line on the outside of the road that we don't have. 90% of your new cars, they, that's what they're using to steer.
Oh, that's a good point. Very good point.
You know, so you can just sit there and say, go stripe $30,000 worth of paint on the side of the road.
So did you share that with Kirby?
I did, yeah.
Okay, great.
Oh, yeah, nope.
Because he'll deal with, he'll deal with Otis on it.
Yeah, done. He was right on that.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Yeah, I almost don't make it home because my car won't drive along Crafton Street.
I had to shut it off. I couldn't do it. It hits all the potholes. It keeps you in the road just in the same pothole.
Mine yells at me if I take my hands off the wheel.
Anybody else for any, uh, future agenda items?
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, I'm complaining about that too because it's Microsoft.